All right, I'd like.
Oops.
Sorry?
I'd like to call the special called meeting of July 27th, 2021 to order. I do not believe anybody will be participating electronically. So Ms. Hall, will you poll the board for a roll call?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Chase?
Present.
Ms. Hazard?
Present.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Ms. Hollerbeck is absent. Ms. Randall?
Yes.
Dr. Warner?
Here.
And Ms. Young?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Right, do I have a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. I'll let Ms. Hall sort out who. Thank you very much. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We will be reading into closed session.
I move that the School Board of Stafford County convene a closed meeting pursuant to section 2.2-3711A3 of the Code of Virginia to discuss and/or consider the acquisition of real property for the construction of High School Number Six, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are in closed session and we will be staying in here for this.
I have a reading out portion. Oh, okay, there it is.
The certification.
Okay.
That pursuant to section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia, the closed meeting of the School Board of Stafford County on July 27th, 2021, be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of Stafford County hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies. And two, only such business, public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board.
For those that are coming in, we are still in the middle of our meeting.
Should not open up the door that quick.
The Board is, the Board is coming out of closed session. I would ask that you all enter quietly. Thank you. All right, Ms. Hall, it's been moved and seconded. Can you go ahead and poll the board?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Chase?
Agree.
Ms. Hazard?
Agree.
Ms. Healy?
I'm going to abstain because I left a meeting.
Okay. Ms. Randall?
Yes.
Dr. Warner?
Yes.
And Ms. Young?
No.
No?
Oh, oh, yes, 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 sorry.
Okay, she kept looking at me. Motion passes.
Madam Chairman, can I put on the record that I left a meeting because of their, the property under discussion is owned by a party that my firm has done business with. And while there's no, you know, conflict, I didn't want any appearance of conflict, so I did not participate in the closed session. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Yeah, okay. She's going, she hasn't made the motion yet. Okay, that was just the certification.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. Ms. Randall, is there a motion coming out of closed session?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the Board authorize the Superintendent or Designee on behalf of the School Board to make an offer to purchase an identified and specific parcel or parcels of real estate for construction of High School Number Six at its appraised value to engage in negotiations with the owner for such purpose and to return to the Board for review of the negotiated contract terms for approval.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
And any abstentions?
I abstain.
All right. Ms. Hall, do you have, do you need?
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
All right, most, motion passes. Thank you. We are out of closed session. Give us one minute if anybody wants to get something to drink, and then we will resume in two minutes. All right? Thank you. All right, good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, July 27th, School Board Meeting of the Stafford County School Board. We do not have anybody who is participating electronically this evening, so we will move on to our roll call. Ms. Hall, can you poll the board, please?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Chase?
Here.
Ms. Hazard?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Ms. Hollerbeck is absent. Ms. Randall?
Here.
Dr. Warner?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. If everyone could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we're going to have the approval of the agenda. Ms. Healy, I believe you have a motion.
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda with one change, and that is to move the consent agenda up following item four, awards and recognition.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other additions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, we will be starting with our recognition, recognition of our GLA Middle School T-shirt design winner. I believe Ms. Bellino will be leading us. Please come on down. And please bring your friends.
I do like to bring my friends. Good evening, Chairman Hazard, members of the Board, and Dr. Jones. This year, for our summer Great Learning Adventure, we held a T-shirt design contest for our middle school students. And tonight, I'm joined by Principal Mike Archibald and Assistant Principal Rose Everett and art teacher Sheila Leesky from Rodney Thompson Middle School, so we can recognize the winner of the contest. Emily Skuse was an eighth grader at Rodney Thompson Middle School last year and soon to be a ninth grader at Mountain View High School. Her design, which is shown here, when I say here, it's pretty fantastic, right? So her design is in two scholar, color schemes and was selected from a variety of entries as our winner. So I think you can agree that it's very fun and exciting. It's exactly what we wanted to demonstrate for the summer learning that was happening. Tonight, we're going to award Emily and her family with shirts of their very own. And Ms. Everett is our vanna today. She's wearing the shirt.
Yeah.
It's very fantastic.
Very nice.
I'm going to invite Emily down, and we would love to get a picture with Emily. And we also have a fantastic poster that we're printing for Emily and for her family so that they can display the accomplishment in their home. So we're very proud of Emily, and we're looking forward to seeing more terrific work from this artist. And here is our artist.
All right. All right, come on down, family. This is the photo opportunity. You get your, I guess no Kodak moments anymore, it's more iPhones, but go ahead, make sure you get your picture, and congratulations.
Put the shirts down so you could get a nice picture. That's not.
There you go.
Do you want to take the mask off? It's optional.
You can take the mask down for the photo.
How about if you don't? I got it.
Mr. Hughes will be waiting for you at Mountain View.
And Mr. Boatsman. Thank you so much. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. All right, our next agenda item is to approve three consent items. Is there a motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or deletions? Hearing none, all those, oh, excuse me? Yeah, I thought we had had some discussion about the, oh, nope, I'm, it's a different part of the agenda. I'm good. Thank you. All right, thank you. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I'm going to recognize Dr. Jones to give us the introduction because one of the consent items is our personnel report. We have some new appointments, so I will turn it over to Dr. Jones for introductions.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Yes, we have several appointments this evening, beginning with Carolyn Goddard.
Good morning, or good evening, Madam Chairs, School Board members, and Dr. Jones. I am very excited to announce the new Assistant Principal at Anthony Burns Elementary, Mrs. Deanna Gabriel. Mrs. Gabriel joined Anthony Burns, the Anthony Burns family, in 2019 as a fourth grade teacher, having previously spent 12 years in elementary and middle school classrooms in Texas, Arkansas, and Florida. This is a return to leadership for Ms. Gabriel, who previously served as an elementary school Assistant Principal in her native San Antonio for five years. Mrs. Gabriel will bring her strong instructional background and enthusiasm for Anthony Burns' students to her new role. Mrs. Gabriel holds a Bachelor of Science degree from Texas A&amp;M and a Master's of Education from Trinity University in San Antonio.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard. And thank you for coming this evening.
And next, we have Scott Elchinko from Stafford Middle.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Jones, I have the privilege tonight of introducing Jessica Ramey as the new Assistant Principal at Stafford Middle School. Mrs. Ramey has been an educator for more than 13 years. For the past five years, she has served as the math coach at Shirley High Middle. Prior to coming to Stafford, she worked in both Prince William and Caroline Counties as a classroom mathematics teacher. Mrs. Ramey has a strong instructional background, has a proven track record of improving academic performance amongst diverse student population, and is experienced in facilitating teacher professional learning communities. Additionally, Mrs. Ramey comes to us with much experience in analyzing student performance data and establishing systems where ongoing student progress monitoring has continued to show significant school improvement efforts in her previous experiences. Mrs. Ramey is a 2003 North Stafford alumni, received her undergraduate degree from Virginia Tech in 2007, and her Master's in Education from the University of Mary Washington in 2009. She resides in Stafford County and enjoys spending time at home with her husband and three boys. Please join me in welcoming her.
Welcome aboard, and thanks for coming today.
Next, we have Dr. George Hammer, who has several appointments.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board, Dr. Jones. I do have three announcements that I'll be making today. It is with great pleasure to announce our new compliance and data analyst supervisor for Student Services and Special Education, Mrs. Kate Johnson. Kate has a rich background in special education, all of which are here in Stafford County. She started as a special education teacher at Shirley High Middle School in 2010, and then transitioned to Anthony Burns as an autism teacher. She later became an educational diagnostician in 2016, and then became the Assistant Principal at AG Wright Middle School in 2018, where she also served as the special education designee. For the past two years, she has served as the elementary supervisor of Student Services and Special Education. She attained her Bachelor's Degree of Education at VCU, and also received two Masters, Masters Degrees from UMW, one in Special Ed and the other in Educational Leadership. We are very honored to have Kate accept this position and looking forward to her applying her expertise, excuse me, expertise in supporting our students with disability in this new capacity.
And thanks for bringing the family.
Absolutely. Wait for her to come on down.
All right, next up.
It is also with great pleasure to announce our new supervisor of elementary schools for Student Services and Special Education, Mrs. Kelly Webb. Kelly also spent her entire teaching career in Stafford County, where she started as a paraeducator in 2008. She also had a passion for working with students with disabilities, so she went back to school to get her modified curriculum degree at ODU while working as a paraeducator and became an autism teacher in Stafford in 2010. She then transitioned into a diagnostician role in 2017, and after that, she transitioned to a behavioral specialist role in 2018, and recently served as one of our autism coordinators. So she's been around a while and has a lot of range of abilities. So Kelly's also currently working on her Master's Degree in Educational Leadership is, and is on track to graduate in 2022. We're very excited for her to get started in this capacity, and she will be a great addition to our team. And we've got one more. Last but not least, I would also like to recognize our new middle school supervisor for Student Services and Special Education, Kimberly Nye. And she brought her family as well. Kim started her career as a long-term substitute teacher in Prince William County in 1999, where she developed a passion for working with students with disabilities. As a result, she went back to school to get her Master's in Special Education at George Mason University, while she was a teacher's assistant and a special education teacher at Benton Middle School. And later, transitioned to Hilton High School as a special education teacher for the past nine years, where she also filled in as the roles of the administrative designee and department chair. Then, in 2019, she worked as an administrative intern and summer school principal. Kim has a Bachelor's in Science and Business Administration from Elon University, and Kimberly has attained her Master's in Educational Leadership from George Mason University. Kim will be a great addition to our team and looking for her to come on board. Thank you very much. Thank you.
And thanks again for bringing your family, for them here to support you.
And we have just one more. Roxana Bandez-Moldun.
Good evening, Madam Chair, all the Board members, and Dr. Jones. I have the immense pleasure to introduce, or I'm sure you know her already, is Monica Cortez-Forman. Monica has a Bachelor's of Science from Arizona State University, a Master's from the University of Phoenix, and she's getting another Master's in School Administration the summer of 2022. She started her career at Spoxylvania, at the alternative school teaching math for middle and high schoolers. Then she switched to English, to high school English for over 10 years, moved on to instructional coach, and then the secondary, secondary literacy facilitator. Not only has she done all that, but Monica has been already helping with the EDOC, who you have heard present, and the equity and family advocates, and she's such a welcome, such a welcome, why am I so nervous? She, you're very welcome here today, to, as the lead equity facilitator in our office. So thank you. And before I forget, her children, Monrovia, Isabella, and Camilla are watching online.
You can give them a nice wave if you'd like. Thank you so much for coming. All right, Dr. Jones, have we identified all of our, okay, my count was, I think, right, but you'd always need backup. So, all right, our next agenda item is our staff reports, which is now 6.01. I believe that will be led by Dr. Hammer and Ms. Hokana, I believe. Come on down.
Let me just pull this up for you all. Give me one second. Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board, Dr. Jones. We have prepared for you the mitigation strategies for the opening of the 2122 school year presentation. I'm going to hand it off to Mrs. Hokana and herself, myself, Dr. Jones, and we'll be prepared to answer any questions that you have. So I'm going to hand it off to Mrs. Hokana, our nurse manager.
Administrator.
Administrator.
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm shorter than him by a lot. So this evening, we prepared this presentation. To start off with, as you can see, we've got a timeline of the mitigation strategies that we've had for the school system, starting from last June of 2020. We started putting, well, actually, we started putting mitigation strategies in a year ago, March, immediately when COVID-19 started. But as of June 30th, the state of emergency was ended by the, the governor. And as of July 1st, the Health Commissioner implemented the emergency health order, which ended as of July 25th. So the state released some interim guidance through the Virginia Department of Health on prevention strategies in preschool, preschool K-12. So we're looking at those this evening. The most important thing that we really need to focus on is the fact that children benefit most from in-person learning. We've noticed over the last 18 months that our children have had a lot of difficulty with doing online learning for a variety of different reasons, but the social-emotional impact on their growth and development has been studied around the country, and so it's a very significant impact for these children. We need to put education first over any extracurricular activities, so we want to make sure that we get the children back in the building with their teachers to receive in-person learning. Our focus needs to be on the prevention of transmission of this disease. There is a new variant that's more highly contagious, so we need to really make sure that we are continuing our mitigation strategies that we've had in place and supplementing them. When we, looking at considering the needs of the community, we need to be looking at the, our transmission rate within the community, which right now is on the rise, also vaccination rate within the community, to determine the safety of having our children in the buildings. And we need to be flexible and innovative, as we have been throughout this whole process. I think, to begin with, we must have had a change every other day, as far as what we were doing with COVID-19. And as all things COVID, today was another announcement that made another change. So we need to continue to be able to be flexible. We have adhered to Department of Health guidelines since, from the beginning of the pandemic, making sure that we're falling in line with the mitigation strategies that have been proposed by the Board of Health in order to make sure we keep our students and staff safe. So mitigation strategies that recommended to be implemented are, as you can see, this long list, which involves still continuing to screen everyone for their health status as they're coming into school daily. Families still need to check their children. Please don't send them to school sick. We need to consider social distancing to the greatest extent possible. Last year, we had very clear-cut guidelines on what that looked like, but we're trying to make sure we can get as many students back in the building as possible. So we do want to keep that, getting the kids back in a priority, and also make sure we keep them at a safe distance. We want to make sure we're still teaching the children how to frequently wash their hands and wipe down frequently touched surfaces. So the hand sanitizer is going to continue to be available in the classrooms that don't have any sinks in them. We're going to continue to encourage our children to wash their hands, not touch their face frequently, that kind of situation. Make sure they're using good hygiene with coughing and sneezes, to make sure they're covering their coughs and sneezes, as we've been trying to teach them. We want to continue with our indoor mask use with staff and students and guests when they're in the building, regardless of their vaccination status. The CDC came out with an announcement today proposing to change back to having everyone, regardless of mask status, I mean vaccine status, to be masked in the school setting because school settings tend to be a Petri dish for infection. Mask requirement on the buses is a federal mandate. We are considered a public transportation when we have our children on the buses, so any children accessing the buses are going to have to wear masks. That's based on the federal guidance. Again, we're going to continue with our cleaning strategy that we had in place last year, which is frequent wipe down of high, high-touch surfaces, the scheduled cleaning of the buildings. So none of that is going to change. We're going to keep that in place. We still are going to encourage people to stay home when they're sick, so they monitor their screening for symptoms daily. If they're sick, stay home, okay? And we also are going to continue contact tracing. There is a change with the contact tracing. Last year, during the public health emergency, the school nurses were doing the immediate phone calls to the families regarding their primary contact to a person that was positive. With the health emergency being rescinded, the school nurses will still compile the line list for the Health Department, because this is a reportable illness, just like measles, just like chickenpox. So we still have to notify the Health Department when we have a positive case in our building. We will give them the immediate contacts of those cases, names and phone numbers for the Health Department to make those contacts to the families. The other change with contact tracing is, in the school setting, with the children being three to, three to six feet apart, if both parties are masked, fully masked properly, and one of them is positive, the other party will not have to quarantine, regardless of vaccine status. However, if one party is not properly wearing that mask, then they will have to, they will have to quarantine. So the positive person will have to isolate for the 10 days, and the unmasked child will have to be quarantined for 14 days. And that's the Health Department guidance, as far as that's concerned. So these are our reasons for having universal masking. You know, we still have children that are under the age of 12 that cannot be vaccinated at this point in time. We are on a meeting with the Health Department weekly to discuss the updates of requirements for COVID-19 mitigation strategies. And we've been asking them for months when they think the vaccine will be available to the younger population. And initially, we were told it would be sometime in the fall, and today, they said late fall, possibly January. So we are going to have an entire population of buildings of children not able to be vaccinated, not by parent choice, but due to the inavailability of the vaccine. So we need to be cautious of that. We also are looking at our mitigate, our transmission levels in the county, and they are on the rise, as I said earlier. So in the notes, you can see that, that we only have about 34.3% of our less than 18-year-olds are fully vaccinated, with only 42.3% in this age group having only received one vaccine. One vaccine does not keep you fully vaccinated, so you're not fully protected. So if you've only received one vaccine, it's a 14-day quarantine period for that child. Okay, so there is a big push to get people vaccinated because it does help to protect it. There is also...
If, if we're going to interrupt the speakers, I will clear it. This is somebody who is speaking. I believe many of you would like to respond. We would like to hear what she is saying, as well as we would like to listen to you. I want the same courtesy extended to any speaker who is at the podium.
Thank you, Ms. Hazard. So we do have, the variant is in the state of Virginia, it's across the country, it's more highly contagious. The Health Department did say today that with the variant being more highly contagious, that persons who have been vaccinated that do have breakthrough infection with COVID-19 seem to carry the same load of, load of virus that an unvaccinated person would have. So therefore, the feeling is that there would be transmission from that person with this particular variant that was not present in the other variants. So it increases the risk of transmission at that point in time. We don't really have a means of monitoring who are vaccinated and who are not. This is not a required vaccine, it is a voluntary vaccine, and so we have to have permission from the parents or from the staff member to access their vaccine status. So it's kind of difficult for us to determine where they are in their, with a vaccine status to determine if they've been exposed. to determine if they've been exposed, whether they need to be isolating or quarantining or not. So that makes it also difficult. There is a, we have to be aware of what our vaccine uptake is, and that's why I gave you those numbers earlier. We need to be also aware of the new guidance from the CDC. And as I said, they're recommending masking for all staff and students and visitors regardless of their vaccine status. The Virginia Department of Health has historically, throughout the pandemic, adopted CDC guidelines, and we follow the VDH guidelines as well. So they have not had a chance to respond to this new information because it did just occur at 3:00 this afternoon. So we got off the call knowing that the news release was coming today. So next week, we should hear from the VDH. I did ask them on our meeting today how soon they would take action on that new guidance, and they said they would be moving as quickly as possible. However, I don't know the timeline, so I can't give you that information. So again, when we're making decisions about how we're proposing to educate our children, we're looking at level of disease transmission in our area. That is on the rise. As of the 17th, we were at moderate transmission with 30.67 new cases per 100,000 in the seven days prior, and a rate of a percent positivity of 2.8. As of the 26th, which was yesterday, our transmission is still moderate. However, the new cases are now 57.3% per 100,000 and a percent positivity rate of 6.6% over the last seven days. So that's a fairly remarkable climb. So that's something to be aware of. Again, we discussed the vaccine rate in our students. We had a couple of vaccine clinics for COVID-19 at North Stafford and at, sorry, not Colonial Forge, at North Stafford and at Brookpoint specifically for COVID-19. I have reached out to the Health Department to see if we can hold more vaccine clinics geared at targeting our students. So I have to wait to hear back from them. We really don't have any data right now on the impact to the schools because the children are not in school full-time. So that's something that we need to look at as we move forward. Also, last year, when you're looking at the capacity needs of the community and the schools, we had definitely seen the need for the impact of not having in-person learning and how these trends of the SOL testing and standard eye testing were affected by not having in-person learning. The Health Department has totally encouraged us to continue with our layered approach to mitigation strategies, meaning the cover your cough, stay home when you're sick, wear your mask properly, wash your hands frequently, frequently touch surfaces to be wiped down continually throughout the day. So, you know, these are all things that we've had in place for a really long time, and we want to keep that going. So this is the layered mitigation strategies outlined in the new interim guidance. It's promoting vaccine. And as I said, we are going to partner again with the Health Department to see if we can get more vaccine clinics for the students as needed. There has been a report from the Health Department that there has been a downward trend in vaccination requests per the vaccine clinics that they're holding. But we do encourage people to continue to seek the vaccine. Again, consistent and correct use of the mask while indoors is very important. We're going into flu and cold weather seasons when people will be up close and personal again, and that's when transmission of respiratory viruses occur. This is a respiratory virus, so we need to make sure that we're protecting as many people as we possibly can. Our flu stats last year were practically nil because of mask use. So, you know, we need to be aware of that. Again, the same mitigation strategies. We're not changing what we did with the ventilation system last year. They upgraded them, changed the filtering systems, they put in the HEPA filter air purifiers in all of the classrooms. So we're going to continue to maintain that as well. Again, teaching the children respiratory etiquette, hand washing, cleaning, symptom screening, staying home when they're sick, that contact tracing in combination with the 10-day isolation for sick persons that are positive for COVID-19, which is standard, and then also the 14-day quarantine. The CDC did come out with guidance for the earlier quarantine release. However, this Health Department wants us, as a school system, to continue with the 14-day quarantine because that is the gold standard, is that 14 days. So we're going to continue with that. The physical distancing piece needs to be three to six feet to the greatest extent possible, but we need to be feasible when it comes to trying to make sure we can get students into the building. But we also will realize that that means that when we contact trace, we're probably going to have more people to quarantine. Okay? And then, if you have any questions?
All right, I'm going to start, Dr. Chase, I don't know if you want to start or we'll just go around or...
Sure. So I think there was one item on here that maybe you skipped, and I just wanted to ask about it. And that was under your reasons for universal masks. One of the things I don't think you mentioned was difficulty monitoring or enforcing mask policies that are not universal. So what's the issue there?
The issue is that you've got students that are allowed not to wear masks because they're fully vaccinated, and then you have students that need to mask because they're unvaccinated. And you have 2,000 children in the building. And how do you keep straight who should be masked and who shouldn't? And then you also have staff members in the same situation. It makes it extremely cumbersome to try to figure out who should and who should not be masked. The other issue is, in the middle school level, you have students in varying ages, and the majority of your sixth-grade students are less than 12. They cannot be vaccinated. So therefore, you know, they should all be wearing face coverings to protect them because they don't have the ability to be vaccinated. Their parents don't have the choice to take them to get vaccines. In elementary school, none of those students are age-appropriate for vaccination. And now we're being told that that's not going to happen until possibly January.
Okay.
And we're going to go through flu season. So...
I just wanted clarification.
In elementary, I appreciate that, Dr. Chase, and thank you for pointing that out to me because I did want to discuss that. But in elementary, the least that the CDC and the Health Department wants us to do is to mask our elementary students. But when you get into the middle and high school, how are you going to know who should be masked and who shouldn't be masked? And so then you're singling out students because you have to figure out, okay, do you have, are you supposed to be masked or are you fully vaccinated? And we don't have a means of determining who's fully vaccinated or not because it is not a required vaccine. So we don't have that documentation to refer to, to see if they are vaccinated or not.
Okay.
So it makes it difficult.
Okay, thank you. And then, another question. You sort of mentioned that now if somebody is masked and there's a child that exposes them to the virus, that they don't have to quarantine because they were masked.
As long as both parties are masked.
As long as both parties are masked. But do we potentially have a, I mean, are, is there still a case where we might have to quarantine an entire class or an entire school? Could, are we still looking at a situation where the Department of Health, the Rappahannock Area Department of Health, could say, there's been an outbreak at this school, and so this school is going to have to be shut down for some amount of time?
They don't typically say to shut down the entire building.
Okay.
But they will look at an outbreak and where that outbreak is occurring from, and then determine that they need to shut down a program.
Okay.
So as we had with sports...
Right.
There have been outbreaks on some of our teams, and we've had to shut down those teams for the 14-day quarantine period until the children met that 14-day quarantine and then came back to school without having had illness. It would be the same in a classroom.
So, I mean, this past year, everybody has had to be masked in the classroom. So did we have any cases where we had to shut down a classroom this past year?
No, not that I'm aware of, that I can remember.
Okay, so this coming year, we might potentially have a case where there could be classrooms that would get shut down, and then we would not be doing in-person learning for those children for some period of time?
For at least 14 days, from the last exposure to the person that's positive.
Okay, all right. Thank you for clarifying for me.
So that is a bigger concern.
Thank you.
Could you just say that one more time? You said 14 days.
From the last exposure to the positive person. So if a student becomes ill on Thursday and has been at school on Thursday, but doesn't go to get tested until Sunday and doesn't report it to school until Monday, the last exposure to the class was on Thursday, so day one is Friday for the quarantine period for the rest of the people that are primarily exposed.
Thank you. I like, those examples always help. Thank you.
No problem.
I'm sorry, Dr. Warner.
That's okay. Thank you, Collette. To be clear, the Delta variant, there are breakthrough infections in people who are vaccinated, and those people can shed virus in the same rate that somebody who is unvaccinated. Is that correct?
That's what they told us today. It's rare, but it is there, and that is a major concern from the CDC.
The other thing is, if both parties are wearing a mask, what is the risk of transmitting the virus?
They said it's less, and so that is why they're allowing us, if the both parties are wearing the masks properly, the nose and mouth has to be covered fully, and there should not be a 15-minute cumulative time period where they're exposed to each other without masking, then they don't have to quarantine.
And isn't it true that the Delta variant is increasingly occurring in younger people?
Yes.
So if I'm not mistaken, I think that the Children's Hospital in Kansas, and in Alabama, and Mississippi, and Louisiana are all seeing a surge in children entering the ICUs.
I'm not 100%. I haven't listened to the news in that way to get where it is exactly, but yes, that has been happening. I have researched it, so thank you. I appreciate that, but I would say that you are more than likely correct. I haven't just seen it myself, but yes, I would agree with that.
Thank you.
I'll give you the number. 600 children have died.
Yeah, I know, I saw it on my phone.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the informations. It's very helpful. I had some questions that Dr. Chase and Dr. Warner already asked, so I'm going to ask the remaining ones. I'm not sure if you have this answer, but what are going to be the school hours in this new year, this new school year? Do you know that?
The school hours?
Yes.
I'm going to be honest, I'd have to defer to somebody else because I'm very confused as to what time the schools are going this year.
It's okay. The only reason why I'm asking is to find out if the kids are going to be in the school longer together, and are we going to be three or six feet apart, and we're having more kids in the different classrooms, correct?
We're going down to three feet, and I believe they are going to be in the building longer during the day. I'm not 100% what the times are.
Okay. So that's a concern to me, if everybody's not wearing a mask, including those students that are allowed not to wear masks because that's also dangerous, that they're allowed not to wear masks because they could be carrying the variant. Like, why are we allowing that? I don't understand that. The other concern I have is around eating. So I've been getting emails, I've gotten emails from, you know, hundreds of emails, but I've gotten hundreds of emails from the opposite direction also. So the question is about eating habits. If individuals are eating, they're not supposed to be talking while they're eating. So we need to, we need to be careful about that because they could spread the variants around that.
It's also a choking hazard.
I'm sorry?
It's also a choking hazard if there's a lot of talking going on during meal.
So we need to look into that. And then, will that be an opportunity for those individuals that are sick and have to stay home and quarantine to virtual learn?
I would have to defer.
And these are just questions. You don't have to answer them right away, but just get me the answer, just so I could...
Their education will be provided for while they're on quarantine. I don't know if it's virtually, but we are required to make sure that we provide for children's education when they're out sick.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure the route.
So this is about the health of every single child. Yes, parents make decisions, but it is about the students right now. Okay.
Ms. Randall, any questions?
Do we know where the students will be eating lunch this year? Will they be in their classrooms? I know last year, we had to move high school, some of the students into the gym. They were sitting in desks. Do we know how lunch is going to be done in the elementary, middle, and high school levels?
I believe that's being...
Thank you.
It's currently going to be a combination. We're going to be factoring mitigation strategies, social distancing, and then coordinating with each of the administrators and the chiefs to make sure that we have enough distancing while students are eating. So it's going to be a combination, both cafeteria and in the classrooms.
Okay. So is it school-by-school choice?
May I, may I...
Thank you.
Each school is different in terms of spacing, so...
So different administration, different patterns?
Correct.
Okay. And when you, is the mask-to-mask, no quarantining, is that new for this year? Because I don't think that was the case for us last year.
No, that was not the case last year. That is new since, I think it's the 21st of July.
Okay. And remind us, an outbreak is what?
Two cases or more that are epidemiologically linked.
Okay.
So if there's two cases in a classroom and it was an exposure from one student to another, yes, that is an outbreak.
Okay. And why, and I understand that, I guess I'm confused as to, are we trying to follow CDC or are we trying to follow VDH? Because you were just saying in one instance that we, the quarantine was going to be the VDH because it was the gold standard and not the CDC.
CDC also says that the gold standard is 14 days, but we always adopt what the VDH does, and VDH has adopted CDC guidance since the beginning of the pandemic. It just takes them a couple of days longer to adopt it.
Okay.
Because the CDC is the federal level, so they have to pass it down to the state level.
Okay, but wasn't the, didn't the CDC have a different formula for quarantine? Wasn't it, like, if you had two negative tests or something like that, you could come back?
Two negative tests was very early on, and it was determined that that's not an appropriate test measure because for up to 12 weeks after and longer after having had COVID-19, you would still have a positive COVID test result.
Right, right.
So they took that out. So that has not been a factor since last July, a year ago, July. The CDC does, did add in the, if you got tested after, between three to five days after exposure, that you could come back in 10 days, but need to monitor for the rest of the 14 days. However, for school settings, they and the VDH have always recommended 14 days.
The full 14. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question about the local transmission rates.
Yes, please.
It says as of last week, it was 30 per 100,000. Is that Stafford County or is that the Rappahannock?
Yes, that is Stafford County.
Okay. And how many people do we have in Stafford County? Is it 150 approximately?
There's a formula that the Health Department uses to calculate the...
So that is not the Rappahannock region, that is strictly Stafford.
That is Stafford County.
Do we know how many of those, either the 30 last week or the 57 this week, were under the age of 18?
They don't report that.
Because I would like to...
Actually, I did, no, they do report it, but I did not look that closely. I'm sorry. They do have that information.
I mean, we are, we are talking about our students, and I would like to have that information if...
I can get that for you.
...made available. And I would think that with the summer travel, you know, that those numbers, you know, would probably rise. I know with Christmas or holiday, whatever its term is correct right now, with the holiday season, you know, we were concerned about that because there's a lot of people that travel and they're exposed to, you know, different areas. So I would like to know if that change is something that is just jumped last week or whether there has been a increase, you know, through the summer months. I'm not asking you for that now, but, you know, that information would be important, but particularly how many of those are under the age of 18.
Okay.
And also, this is, this is just a comment, I'm not going to give testimony about this, but I really would like to see more opportunities for families to have their children vaccinated. but I really would like to see more opportunities for families to have their children vaccinated at the schools. And also, if there's a way we could include, you know, parents or guardians in that as well.
They did, they did open it up to parents if they were with them and requested.
You said we had two. We had it at North Stafford and Brookpoint, but if we could have more. I mean, neither one of those is in the southern end of the county. I mean, I know they're, you know, north and the Brookpoint Central, but if that's something that we could, you know, we could do to facilitate it, I think that would be, you know, a benefit.
And we have reached out to the Health Department to see if we can do it again. Parents are also able to contact the local pharmacies and obtain vaccine as well, and the Health Department still has their link going.
And are we making that information available to families?
It's on our website and it's posted through the Health Department.
On the website. I mean, if you don't have the internet, it's a little hard. But I, you know, we've got all this COVID funding and all these assets. I mean, I think one of the best things we could do is to put the opportunity out there, just to make it a choice if parents, you know, want to have it for their students, particularly the students that are, you know, younger, you know, that may not have the opportunity. And we know we have a lot of families that have, you know, worked two jobs and, you know, don't have a lot of time. So if we are able to do it again, I would suggest we do it in more schools and, you know, more geographically central, like, you know, Moncur would, I would think, be a, you know, a good spot, or Wywater behind, you know, the middle schools in the south. I don't see any schools in, you know, in the southern end of the county here.
And, Celia, I can work with the Health Department to see if we can do that in a more southern location. It does have to be by appointment, because that vaccine is very, needs to be.
Time-sensitive.
Yes, it has to be taken care of in a deep freezing situation, and they don't wanna waste vaccine and defrost vaccine unnecessarily and not be able to use it.
I understand. And I'm just, I'm just making this a commentary, and I don't know how the board feels, but personally, I think that's something that we can do that would benefit the community and also, you know, benefit the schools as well.
Just to give you back off of you, I agree with you. You know, I was unpopular when I asked for teachers to be vaccinated and for over sixteen, and now, you know, we're doing it. So I totally agree with you on that, to make it available to families in certain areas. I also wanted to know, when you mentioned the numbers of individuals just getting one vaccine, are we following up to ensure that the second one is given? Is it our folks or it's just a number, like you mentioned?
It's a number that's provided on the Health Department web link. This is not a required vaccine, so our staff are not made aware of who is vaccinated and who is not. The Health Department does follow up with those families to try to get them to come back in. And most of the time with those clinics, they are making their appointment for their second dose before they leave. When we did the clinic at North and at Brook, the next, the second dose date was set at the same time as the initial dose date was set, and they just needed to come at the same time for their vaccine. And if parents were there and needed vaccine, they were given the vaccine as well. So it was, we worked with Giant and we worked with Safeway per the Health Department, so that's how it was done.
The other, I think you all followed up on that, to make sure that subs were able to get.
Oh, yes.
That's one. And hopefully the rate will not, we're not gonna switch on the topic, ask you about rate increase, but that'll be maximum since the last time we got.
It's hard to give you the rate of vaccination for our staff, because some of our staff were reticent to report whether or not they were vaccinated, because it is confidential health information and it's not a required vaccine. So for us to be able to tell you what percentage of our staff have been vaccinated is extremely difficult.
And at last, and then I'll sit on my hands, we have flu vaccines, we have polio vaccines. Kids need to come in, a four-year-old, and they need to have their shot prepared. This is coming to be such a thing, and so prepare. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a couple of questions. First one, and this is one I should probably have figured out. With regard to the rates in Stafford, when somebody is going in and gets vaccinated, how is that done? Let's say they don't get, and this probably sounds crazy, the vaccine here in Stafford, like, college students. I don't know, have to, so. Let's say they were vaccinated somewhere else or not vaccinated, or if they were vaccinated on a military base, does the vaccine box get ticked based on where you're getting the vaccine or based on your address?
That's a question I will have to, yes, it does make perfectly good sense, and I don't know if the Health Department, if it's given at a Health Department or out in town, it is required to be entered into the Virginia Immunization Information System. Military is not, and military is kept on the base. So I don't know if when they put it in the VIS, is that based on the locality that they received the vaccine or based on their address of residency? So I will have to get back to you on that and ask the Health Department that question.
Just because I think about it with many of our parents or families that live here, many of them are military or even government-connected, where they may have gotten the vaccine. And so I'm somewhat, not that I don't believe it, but it seems low, knowing some of the people that are here. And so, like I said, it's not deter, but it would be interesting for a community that I believe is fairly tied to military installations and even the government to see, are they being captured or not? Because I don't want our rate to look a certain way that it may be something else. But just, just to understand how it's captured. My other question is, when we talk about the three to six feet, everybody knows my usual issue is growth, so I'm gonna move it in even in here. We have schools now with four trailers. We have large class sizes. If we are not able to meet the three-feet distancing, what does that do?
It has been, it does make sense. What the guidance is, is to try to make it at least three feet to the greatest extent possible without limiting students being able to attend school. So if you can't maintain the three feet, and it's gonna prevent children from coming to school, they're saying to make them closer.
Okay. I mean, I feel like we have to.
The American Academy of Pediatrics as well is very much in line with trying to get children back in school, because the social-emotional learning, their mental health status, they're also their physical status. So they're also in line with that recommendation as well.
It's just as we plan, and I know we talk about local buildings. Some buildings may or may not be able to meet those distances. Just in order to make sure that we are allowing our students to be in there, I just wanted to make, to see if there was, then we get to some other level of. So I'm glad to hear, I think, that part going forward. Could you go over one more time, what do you expect the timeline next? At three-thirty today, I know it said three o'clock. I'm sorry, I didn't see it till three-thirty. But new guidance has been issued. Sort of the now what happens in Virginia?
Typically, it takes about a week or two for them to adopt the guideline and to post it and to share it with the school system. So I would say within the next two to three weeks. They really couldn't give us a timeline. We were on a call with the Health Department today. We meet with them weekly. We did specifically ask, like, if there's change, how soon will we hear this guidance? And they're saying as soon as possible, but they could not pin us down to a time.
Understood. So I will say to fellow board members, I believe that the guidance, but I am certainly up to the will of the board, believe that this is actually a decision that has been specifically given to school boards. They didn't even give us much other options based on guidance. Unfortunately, from my perspective, Virtual Virginia was closed on July fifteenth, so if there were decisions that families wanted to make based on going forward, those decisions have been shut. I believe it was July fifteenth was the last, was the last day. I will be honest, having guidance, and I do appreciate the guidance that you've given tonight, but I have to say, I am a person who likes to study it and look at it and make sure I understand it. I understand some of the questions asked by members of either additional information that at this, you know, particular point, I will be very honest. I don't believe that school boards are the ones that are most equipped to make this decision. My decision in regards to education is to get kids into school as quickly and as safely as possible. However, I would like to say that I think that there is still additional guidance potentially forthcoming that will be provided to school boards or hopefully to health, the Health Department. I really feel uncomfortable making decisions that then will be potentially overruled within weeks. So I am just asking my board members, how do you feel? I know this is not on for action. As of earlier, I thought we would put it straight to action. I'm just trying to get a sense of the board.
I have not had a chance to read the new CDC guidelines, and I agree that I think the Virginia Department of Health is going to be updating their recommendations based on those. So I don't wanna make a decision tonight that may be overturned, that may be nullified by new guidance. I know the American Academy of Pediatrics also recommends the masking, especially in the elementary schools, where those students cannot be vaccinated. So I can see delaying until we have clear affirmation of what the CDC is recommending.
But if that takes more than two weeks, that's after school starts.
Right.
So we cannot wait.
We can't wait.
We can't wait that long. My thought would be that we would give it a week, that we would meet here. We can either have a public hearing just on this particular topic, because I think it is of utmost concern on people's minds. But I also believe it needs to be a full and fair process, because I will tell you, getting information at three-thirty, not just from the school system but from the CDC, is difficult for me to be able to read in three hours when there isn't that option. I also note that one of our board members is not here this evening and would like to also participate, I believe, in this discussion. Is there, I believe there may be a preferred date of Wednesday of next week. Is that an open evening? I know that, I would ask board members to check their calendars, see if they can be cleared. We could, I believe that the chambers are open. Thank you. August fourth.
Good. August fourth.
Is that, is there a particular start time? Would you like to be earlier, later? What time?
Well, it depends on the board. That board member is not here, if that's a good time for her, so she could participate.
She usually can't participate till after six.
I would say no sooner, no earlier than six would be my preference, I think would be. And I think giving this much notice, it's easier to.
Madam Chair, I'd also like to point out that next week also begins orientation for the middle school and high school and elementary school. So I'm just wanting to make everyone aware that, you know, those are opportunities that we could visit our schools, but also, they need some guidance.
Madam Chair? I'm just, I'm concerned that we are in a position to make decisions and policies and guide the team. We have someone in front of us that is part of our school system, giving us guidance. And I think we're saying that that's not sufficient right now. Did we ask her what she thinks right now, what we, what she recommends as our person that supports us on this?
Is there anything different from your presentation that you would like to change?
No, I feel that the Health Department has given us good guidance until this point and that, you know, masking the children to try to prevent further transmission is important. We also need to continue the mitigation strategies that we have in place in all layers, not just masking, but also the hand washing and all the other layers of this mitigation that we have in place.
So I'm with her. That's all I have to say.
It's not a one-step process.
Ms. Healy?
I'm not sure you wanna hear from me.
It's okay. I'm just trying to come up with something and we can.
Florida. I mean, this board makes policy. That's our job. That's one of the few responsibilities we have. And in making that policy, we consider, we certainly consider, you know, our superintendent. We consider our, you know, our health experts, and we also consider the community. And I know, you know, from emails I've gotten, you know, there's two sides. There's always two sides. But that's what I'm gonna be considering, and whether it's this week or next week, you know, I'm gonna weigh all this. Which is one reason why I did ask about how many of these percentages, you know, these thirty people last week and fifty-seven people this week, how many were under the age of eighteen? If you tell me, you know, they all are or significantly, you know, more of them are, then, you know, that.
And I can get you, I'll get you that data.
Yeah, that may have, that may have an impact. But if you tell me very few, you know, that would have an impact as well. So, you know, to say, you know, this week, we've got your recommendation, and this is no effect, you know, I really do respect you and admire what you've done. It's amazing. You've survived this year, because really, you have had the weight on your shoulders, you know, from everybody in the school. So thank you very much for what you've done. But I think it's our responsibility, and I think we need to consider the experts, but we need to consider our community as well. And that's what we need to hear from the people here. We've already heard from a number of people. And if there's other information we need, I certainly would defer on that. And, you know, given, given the impact of this, I think we very well may need seven people here, because, you know, six isn't even number. So I'm willing to do this next week, but I would like to get it done as soon as possible so people can be making their plans and the schools can be ready, because this is a very important issue. Last year, it wasn't, it was easy for me last year. It was an unknown, you know, we, we really didn't have, you know, much to go on, and I think it was the right decision. This year, I think things are different, so I'll just leave it, I'll leave it at that. I do wanna hear, you know, from everyone, but let's just, let's just make this and go. And certainly, I do hope that this board, you know, will be making this decision considering all the factors, you know, that are required. So thank you, really thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you.
Been a long year, I know.
Dr. Chase, I think you're next.
Yeah. And I just wanna say, I'm experiencing, I have to say, a little bit of déjà vu. So a year ago, this board made one decision about masks without hearing from everybody, and then, as I recall, staff completely bombarded our emails, and we suddenly realized that we hadn't heard from part of the community. And we ended up voting and completely changed what we did. So I agree, we do need to hear from the entire community. Thank you.
One more comment?
Yes, Ms. Healy.
I agree about hearing about the whole community. I received a hundred and one emails. We have twenty-nine, almost thirty thousand students, and I'm hoping that we have an opportunity to hear twenty-nine thousand, thirty thousand minus a hundred and one emails. Some emails from two parents of one family. So I would also like to hear of the whole community to ensure that everyone gets a say.
All right. And now, because this new, the plan or the proposal or recommendation from our staff has now been released. We did not release it until late this afternoon. We'll give everybody time to review. So what I will be saying, we will be calling it, I guess it would be a special call meeting, beginning. beginning, I believe, at 6:00 or 6:30. So I just would like to check in with our other board member. I'm not going to do it during the meeting. I don't, I'm not going to do that, but it will be either 6:00 or 6:30.
Maybe, maybe Ms. Hall could do that while we're, while we're meeting, just so we can have a date and a time.
Sure.
Before we leave here. And can we also allow comments to be submitted for the record for people that may not be able to be here? I mean, it is the end of the summer break before school starts, so, you know, anything that's submitted could be, you know, entered as part of.
As part of the record.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Young.
So once we make the decision, depending on where we land, is there sufficient time for individuals, being that Virginia, whatever it was called, is closed, and the other one, I think, I forgot the name, they're not accepting any new students, so then what happens to parents that thought we were gonna just continue with what we're doing, which is masking, and then suddenly, God forbid, we change our minds? Where do they go? Where do they land? Where is their choice? This is just a question that will come up. What choice do they have? And then, I'm not done yet. To ensure that, one of the things, I know we had COVID funds. I don't know if I have an answer to that yet, but I know some of the classes have Plexiglas in the classroom. I'm not sure if we're doing that for every single class, and perhaps there's something that we need to invest in. Just, just start looking at that because if we run out, you might want to start looking at that, just in case of whatever decision you all make.
Ms. Rand, oh.
Excuse me, that's "we" make.
I know where I stand.
Ms. Randall, did you have a question? I'm sorry.
Thank you for that.
No? All right. I would ask board members, if there are specific questions, I know Ms. Healy, yours was there, but if there are additional questions, believe it or not, when we leave here, we can meditate and throw it. I would ask that we return those questions to our clerk to be shared with all board members and Dr. Jones, and of course, Dr. Kizner. Please, let's give our staff some time. They are also planning for the opening of school, so I would ask by the latest by Friday at noon, if there are additional questions that you would like answered. I would like to ask as well, this will be in my request, of a very straightforward, I love examples, I know Ms. Ho kind of got that from me, of how quarantine, how all of that would work in a classroom. I do think that is something that would be very helpful with an example or a sports team. Let's come up with some of the examples that we think might or could, hopefully not typically occur, and what the ramifications to the students in that room or that team or that activity would be, just so there is clarity, to the extent that we can get clarity, of course. And then if there are questions that are raised by emails, like I said, though, let's try to limit them to noon on Friday to our staff. All right? Are we good there? Dr. Chase?
Are you sure? Well, I just wonder if we can also, if we need legal counsel on some of our questions, is that an option as well?
I believe that we have access to that. I know that it was encouraged in the guidance from the governor's office, and I believe several of the attorneys are fielding this from several school districts, so yes, we can make sure.
So I just have this question of, if we, if we did parent choice and a parent wanted their child masked and we did not make sure their child stayed masked during school, would we be liable? So I'll put that question to the attorney.
Sure. Please make sure that Ms. Boatwright is CC'd on, especially on that one, or any of those that have that possible. Ms. Healy.
Shouldn't they just all go to the clerk?
Yes.
And the clerk can coordinate with Ms. Boatwright about which ones we need outside counsel on because Ms. Boatwright is our counsel.
Yes, exactly.
I have a question, and this is, this goes to the mask, the no mask. How are we going to confirm that a child was, quote, and I'm saying anybody, any student was properly masked during this time? I mean, is this an honor system? That's what concerns me. I mean, we're all talking about this quarantine and what's going to happen, which is going to be if someone was not properly masked, but say, you know, the mask slips down, oh my gosh, does that mean it's not proper and we have to be quarantined? So that's, all this enforcement is, I think, going to be interesting because we're talking about, especially with younger ones, I mean, the teacher is not seeing every student every minute, you know, with hallways, you know, whatever. So I've got some questions about that, but that's not really, I'm not going to be answering, but it's something that would concern me because we're getting all, oh my gosh, we might have to quarantine because they weren't properly masked. Well, how do you, how do you know? How do you know? So that's retort.
You can craft your question and send that in.
There's not going to be, I mean, I'd like to see an answer to that one. I wouldn't expect an answer.
We can always try. All right. Anything else on this one for right now? Okay, so our second staff report, I believe, will be with Mr. Fulmer, related to the American Rescue Plan Act ESER III funding update. Thank you, Mr. Fulmer.
Good evening. So if you recall, about a month ago, we were in front of the board and asked them to approve a request for the board supervisors to appropriate the funds from ARPA, the ESER III funds, and we submitted that request to the county. They did approve and appropriate those funds. And so now, staff have been working with the chiefs and the principals on developing a little bit more detailed plan. If you recall, high-level overview, we received about $14.2 million in this ESER III federal stimulus funds. 2.8 of that, 20% had to be set aside for learning loss remediation. We had already identified about 1.7 in FY22 operating budget items that would qualify for this, that we moved out of the operating budget and moved into our grants fund for the ESER III funding, and then we moved 1.7 in FY23 so that it wouldn't hit right away in the second year of the budget. And that was items like air purifiers, or not air purifiers, but air filters, instructional software, other supplies. So that was our first allocation, and we also set aside $100,000 for a community engagement bus. And so with the learning loss money and in addition to the balance of about 7.8 million, we knew we wanted to identify specialized staff and instructional paraprofessionals to help the learning loss across the division. So with working with the chiefs and the principals, looked at at the elementary school level, identifying about four to seven paraprofessionals per school, per elementary school, and those would be assigned, you know, based on need. You know, they were targeting the grade levels with the highest need, and they'll continue to shift those as deemed necessary based on the results of when kids return. But obviously, with school starting in a few weeks, we are looking to move pretty quickly on that, and so that's why we're back here updating you on that, on that progress. The paraprofessionals, we would, we know we're not going to hire every single one of them with four to seven per school, depending on size, so we know that even if I budget for the full amount, we're going to have a lot of savings, and even in the first year and the second year. So I didn't budget that we were going to be fully staffed with four to seven per school. Instead, assumed that we were going to have savings each year, and that was able to extend out those paraprofessionals, not only for this entire school year, but also for the following school year. And then in the third year of this ESER grant, we would start to phase those paraprofessionals out so that we don't have a massive cliff that we have to pull all the paraprofessionals out at the same time. So look at cutting down to about 50% of those paraprofessionals at each school, and then in the fourth year, they would go away at those elementary schools. And then a similar approach at middle school, except we're just looking at two paraprofessionals at each middle school. And then at the high school, I'll let Stan, we provided this update to the FABC, and for folks that were there know that Stan can give a little bit better explanation for how we're delivering that at the secondary level, because at high school, it's a little bit different with the class structure. It's not, not the same as an elementary school classroom, as you're all aware, and so, Stan, if you can delve into that a little bit.
So just a more targeted intervention approach, particularly in literacy and math at the high school level? Because we know that those are areas where students suffered the most this year.
And we were looking at this instructional pair approach, and we did a community stakeholder group, if you recall, at the June 29th meeting, we had a public hearing. And then after that, we actually did a community stakeholder group, a virtual meeting with a lot of our advisory committee, parents, student, or parent and staff advisory committees and the other school board advisory committees. And the number one thing, 95% of the people said is they wanted support, and we didn't, we actually did not prep them. It was very high level. I just said, you know, this is how much we have, this is what it could be used for, and it was very much across the board that they thought we should do this targeted support in the classrooms, whether it was after school, during school, but they wanted to see those instructional paraprofessionals reaching out to our kids. So it helped really drive home that that was the decision we wanted to go with from the chiefs and the principals. So that's where we are moving towards, and so I just wanted to provide that update, and we're going to start hiring those right away. I know a lot of the principals have already identified some of those paraprofessionals.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions? Members? None? All right. Thank you, Mr. Fulmer. Appreciate that update. All right. Next, we are moving on to public comment, our citizens' comment. This evening, three minutes are allotted to each speaker. Speakers are encouraged to provide a copy of your comments to the board clerk. If you don't have a copy this evening and would still like to provide them, they can be provided to our clerk, certainly via email, but if you have them this evening in written form, you may present them to Ms. Hall, and she will distribute to board members. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, organizational affiliation, if that applies. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. The chair reserves the right to restrict total citizen comment received at any particular board meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. When you approach, there are, it's the green light approach. When you get started, the green light will come on. When you have one minute remaining, there will be a yellow light. When the red light goes off, because we have many tonight, you will need to stop, you will need to stop your comments at that point. We'll give you a second or two just to quickly wrap it up. We have a lot of people here tonight, and we want to give you your full three minutes. I would ask that we listen to each member. I would prefer no clapping. We want to keep the comments moving and rolling, so what I will do is list a number of the names, then I would just ask for a few of you to stand on the side and then come forward as your name is called, especially if you're like sitting in the middle to crawl over everybody. If your name is called, make your ways to the edges so you can come forward quickly. I'll call about three or four at a time. Any citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, any individual desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Stafford County Public School Policy 1113. So I'm going to call the first five names. Like I said, if you can make your ways to the side, it'll just have you all come forward.
Madam Chairman, I have a suggestion, and this is just to be fair to everyone. I'd say for tonight, because we have a lot of speakers, that second or two that you talked about, for some, goes on a lot longer. Some people stop immediately. When it's yellow, you have one minute left. When it's red, I think we should stop. I know that may sound harsh, but I think that's the most fair thing to do, and make sure everyone is able to speak who wishes to speak.
Sure.
Because I, I mean, I've seen people go on when other people may want to go on, but they're going to respect that. So if we could do that, maybe something we should consider implementing at some other point, but.
Sure. All right. When the red goes, if you will stop speaking at that point, you may, of course, at that point, if you have your comments, hand them to Ms. Hall for distribution to the board. All right. I'm going to call off the first five names. Stephanie Edmund, Rick Edmund, Melissa Bradley, Courtney Supfen, and Alyssa Halsted. So if you all could, whoever can make it forward, come on, come on down and provide your comments. And thanks for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. My name is Stephanie Edmund. I recently retired from Stafford County Public Schools. I taught here for 22 years. Our family's been looking forward to our grandson returning to the classroom. In the past few weeks, the Delta variant has been described as COVID on steroids. It's surging throughout this country, as Mrs. Ho canna has given in her report. Last week, Dr. Walensky with the CDC stated that 600 children in this country have died of the COVID variant. Our family is deeply concerned. We're even more concerned due to the fact that Stafford County does not require teachers or staff to be vaccinated. I personally know teachers in the building I worked at who didn't believe in this, so to speak. Consequently, last weekend, after I was getting ready to enjoy retirement, I was asked to homeschool my grandson. We are concerned with putting him in the classroom. He is a third grader. We want him fully vaccinated before he's back into the building. I looked into the option on the Stafford County website for K-12 Stride. I went through the presentation a couple of times, and the next day I contacted Park Ridge Elementary. I was told that the Stride program closed in June. My only option is to homeschool him or send him into the building. We're not willing to pay to play Russian roulette with his life. I asked the assistant principal at Park Ridge if I could have a pacing guide. If I have to go find a program to teach him, then I need a pacing guide to know what his classroom teacher will be teaching each nine weeks so that I can parallel his curriculum with that. Now, mind you, I'm a middle school science teacher for 22 years, but I'm willing to teach third grade. I need resources. I asked for books. I was told possibility. I know I spent until 9:30 at night building lessons on campus with this. I need, I asked if there were any teachers that would provide me some of their resources so I'm not starting from scratch. I was told that probably wouldn't happen. Here's the deal. I am an experienced teacher. I am more than capable of educating my grandson, but what about people in this county who aren't teachers, who either aren't capable of teaching their children or they're not able to teach their children? This virus is surging, whether we like it or not. It is very good at making its way. Is that red?
That's red.
I'm asking that you allow my grandson to be admitted into this Stride program, please.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
All right. Rick Edmunds?
I yield my time to Stephanie Edmunds.
I, we're not going to do that, doesn't.
Briefly, I think it's one minute.
No, we have had this in the past where we have allowed minutes and swapping, and it has not gone well. Mr. Edmunds, is there any way you can come forward with, just give us the big picture? You can always follow up with an email. I just, I'm not trying to do that, but then we start, and it allows people a little bit extra. If you could give those to Ms. Hall.
Ms. Hall.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Edmunds. Give us, give us a second. She's going to get in place, wait till the green light starts.
Okay, thank you. As a retired milito officer, this is going to be very easy for me, getting up front of a group of people. So I'd like to basically second what my wife said. I think it, like Ms. Young said, what do you do about parents who maybe have decided about six weeks ago that we really wanted our grandson to go to school? We're with everybody in here that kids need to be in school, but if it's not safe and we don't think it's safe and we're parents and we say it's not safe, what do you do now if there is no other option other than go to school? So it's a parent's choice, and there's a lot of people behind me that are saying parent's choice. a lot of people behind me that are saying parent's choice. So if it is truly a parent's choice to go to school or not go to school, then I think Stafford County needs to provide some means for parents who are not going to put their kids in school to get a proper education and not just say, go online and find it yourself. That is just not fair. Because things have changed, board members. Things have changed. The COVID's getting worse. I mean, when, when I was in the Pentagon, they said, you can take this off. I was like, thank God. It's gone. But I expect in the next couple of weeks, the Department of Defense, and I work for the Army, is going to tell me that I got to put it back on. So be it. But for these parents, like my wife said, that are not teachers, you can't just make this up, or they're going to be behind. So if parents do not want to send their kids to school, it is their choice. Please support them with a program to help them so when they do get vaccinated, they can come to school. And that's all I have to say, Madam Chairman.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Melissa Bradley. I reside in the Rock Hill District. I'm a parent of a middle schooler and a rising freshman. My middle schooler, the school system failed her last year, unfortunately. She didn't just fail, she got zeros, all the way down, zeros. She wasn't allowed to have her camera on. She's high functioning autistic. She has a 504 plan. They couldn't follow it. They just physically couldn't. It, it wasn't capable. She wasn't allowed to have her camera on because it was too much of a distraction. So how much of a distraction is it going to be when the teacher has to stop to tell her eighteen times that she needs to pull her mask up because she doesn't, she can't physically handle having a mask on? I enrolled her for Virtual Virginia in case you guys did not pass, or you guys are requiring the mask mandate as a backup, because I can pull her out of Virtual Virginia if I need to. Unfortunately, if she fails in Virtual Virginia, they're going to kick her out anyways, and then I'm stuck. She's developed lung inflammation from an unknown source. I'm not going to say it's from the masks, but they have no other answer as to why in the last year she's developed it. Also, the other point is how many kindergartners come into school every year and get sick within the first couple of months because they've been home for their first five years of life? They didn't have a preschool experience? Their immune systems aren't built up? Our kids have been masked for so long, their immune systems are at risk. You know, you're going to put these kids in the schools with masks on, and they're not getting the antibodies that they need from the germs, from the colds, from everything like that. I one hundred percent don't want her going to school in a mask. She is going to be touching her face a whole lot more. She's picking up germs, touching her face. She's going to be touching it, touching her mouth, and then touching everything around her. Whether she, if she's got a mask on, she's going to be putting more germs out there. That is just one of the things that I don't think people are thinking about. You know, I understand everybody's concern. I really do. But it should be, you know, and to piggyback off of the previous commenters, there should be more opportunity up until the start of school for the parents that do or don't. You know, I shouldn't have had to make this decision at the end of last year to put her in virtual school because I wasn't knowing what was going to be happening. So I do agree with that comment. But sending our kids back in masks, I think is just going to be more detrimental to the classroom, to all the kids around them. It's going to be more of a distraction, and they just need to be free.
Thank you. All right. Next, come on down. But just so everybody knows, Virtual Virginia is not run by the school boards. It is run by the state. Thank you.
Hi, I'm, I'm switching gears here a little bit. My name is Courtney Supfen, and I'm a full-time office manager at Moncrief Elementary. And I'm here before you tonight to propose a revision of the policy 2000 Student Services, which excludes non-resident, non-licensed employees from transferring their children to their school of residence. Stafford County Schools prides itself on being equitable. The very core of the word equity is equal. The policy I am referencing tonight directly negates Stafford County's central motto. Let's review some of the surrounding school system's transfer policies regarding non-resident, non-licensed employees, and I can provide hard copies of their policies if necessary. Spotsylvania, King George, Orange, Culpeper, Caroline, Prince William County, as well as Fredericksburg and Alexandria cities, only require that you are a full-time employee to transfer your children. Licensure is not even mentioned. They see the importance in creating a lateral incentive applicable to all full-time employees with intent to recruit and retain the best employees, period. I understand it's a numbers game, budgetary regulations, real estate development, zoning, overcrowding, et cetera. I'm certain that the surrounding counties have dealt with the same concerns at one time or another. However, the significant difference is these school systems are not willing to cut corners when it comes to supporting all their full-time employees, as they are not seen as expendable. In closing, I sincerely hope you consider what I'm proposing here tonight. Ultimately, there is no difference between a non-licensed and licensed employee with respect to being a parent. We could all use and equally deserve the county's support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alyssa Halsted, Hartwood. President Ronald Reagan said government's first duty is to protect the people, not run their lives. But this has not been the case for the last year. That's why I'm here tonight. I'm a public health emergency manager who worked extensively in the public and private sector to develop, write, and exercise emergency plans. My expertise was biological planning, more specifically pandemic planning. I worked for the largest health department in this country, and then multiple health departments across this great nation for fifteen years. Based on my work, we have egregiously failed our children by ignoring well-defined strategies designed to protect them from the beginning. Instead of trusting those plans, we have allowed the CDC, a non-government group of scientists, to dictate how we live as free Americans. The National Biostatistic System said it was impossible to quantify how many people died of just COVID because of pre-existing conditions and comorbidity. Yet we continually allowed the media, the government, and those elected locally to help keep us safe from this level of overreach, beat us over the head, and made us submission. We, as parents, have failed our kids. We have to live with that. It's time to stop perpetuating the lies, lies that have resulted in online schooling for our children and mask mandates shipping them of their fundamental rights to be kids, innocent and free from fear. It is our job to protect them, but we haven't. We've taken away their rights to participate in school activities, to smile at each other or a stranger, to hug a friend in need, and worse, we told them, be responsible for other people's health and wellness. That's disgusting. The ramifications of this, I think we will not know for a very long time. We have seen increases in drug use and abuse in teenagers, suicides. We've watched family members turn against each other, encourage neighbors and strangers to publicly shame each other and isolate our children for nothing. We, the parents, come together now to ensure this level of control does not continue to happen or happen again. I shudder to think of the children who live in abusive homes, who have nowhere to go because school and public buildings such as libraries and community centers were closed to them. By not pushing back against unconstitutional mandates, we have failed them and so many others, because we didn't say no more. Children are resilient, but that doesn't mean we push them to the edge and expect them to come out of it unscathed. In my career, I worked with doctors, scientists, and academics. Not a single one of them ever talked about doing any of what's been done to our kids today. They wouldn't have even considered it because it's unfair, it's unconstitutional, and it's un-American. The handling of this virus was politics, plain and simple. Recently, someone said the fight of parents today will determine the fate of the future. Faith in themselves, and they are born to stand up for themselves and each other in difficult times. Faith in humanity, faith in God. For though there is hope, there is hope. That's something we haven't been allowed to have in the last year. As adults, we are living our futures. Our yesterday is gone. So our actions or inactions today, our mistakes, successes, and failures, impact our children's futures. Recent, tonight, you have one chance to change the course of future by saying no more. Our children deserve better than this.
Thank you. I guess so. All right. Hold on. I'm going to read the next list of, of, Steph, I'm sorry. Okay. Stephanie Moorka? Okay. Lisa Kennedy, Kelly Loynes, John Roy, and Jamie Decatur. If you all could sort of make your, your way to the, to the sides, that would be great. I would appreciate, if we do not clap, just respectfully listen to each of the speakers. That would be great. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening.
Oh, got it. Oh, sorry.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Mohica, and I reside in the Garrisonville District. I have two children who will be going into fifth and third grade. I am here this evening to address my concerns with my children wearing masks in the upcoming school year. Forces mention how hard it is for them to breathe fresh air while wearing a mask. All summer long, they have enjoyed going maskless and being free. My child who has a speech impairment can be misunderstood while trying to speak through a layer of fabric that is placed over their mouth. This is a huge disadvantage for my child who already struggles with so much. The frustration of how my child is made to feel when someone is unable to understand them while being required to wear a mask. In my opinion, it is inhumane to a child who is struggling from speech aproxia, let alone any child. If the mask mandate is enforced, then this will be hindering my child's ability to be heard clearly and possibly affect future progress. I also want to mention that the mask has created anxiety. It took some time just to get my other child to unmask and walk outside without feeling like they would get in trouble for not wearing a mask during the summer. This is cruel what is being done to our kids. In the future years to come, we do not know the long-term implications that wearing a mask can cause on our children and their mental well-being. Parents should have a choice if their child is to be masked or not. Our neighboring counties, Fall Care, King George, and Spotsylvania are allowing parents the options to unmask their kids during school. If they can set these rules and guidelines, and so can Stafford's school board, please consider parents' choice on this matter and what is best for each individual child. Thank you, and have a wonderful evening.
All right. Come on down. Whoever's next.
Hi. Thank you for letting us speak tonight. My name is Lisa Kennedy. I'm in the Falmouth District. My son just graduated this year. My daughter is a rising sophomore. This is one of the masks that she wore when she was allowed to come into the building last year. It's not medical grade. It, it was made from fabric squares that I bought at Hobby Lobby. I don't know if it serves a purpose. What I do know is that her walking around wearing this routinely caused her to develop anxiety issues, and she has been paranoid and withdrawn ever since. My nephew, who is in elementary school, same problem. When he meets people that he doesn't know, he immediately claps his hands over his mouth because he's petrified. He's petrified of meeting strangers, including children. He doesn't want to be around other people. I don't mean any disrespect. If people want to wear masks, wear masks by all means. Do whatever works for you. I just know anecdotally, it has not worked for my family, and it is creating a lot of problems. And that's really all I have to say. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Kelly Loynes, and I'm from the Rock Hill District. I'm here today to ask you to institute a personal choice mask policy. Each board member should be considering what is in the children's best interest. There is no data to support continued forced mask, masking of children. In fact, most data points in the opposite direction. An article from April of this year in the International Journal of Environmental Research and Public Health cites one hundred and seventy-eight other papers and/or studies regarding the negative effects of masks from both pre- and post-COVID timeframes. Of particular interest is that the World Health Organization describes sick building syndrome, a condition in which people living mostly indoors experienced acute disease-related effects without being actually ill from a diagnosed disease. Many of the issues associated with long-term mask wearing and breathing are similar to those of this syndrome. From increased carbon dioxide levels to increased heart rate and respiratory frequency, headaches, fatigue, which over time can take a huge physiological toll, to a distraction in the classroom, masks are an impediment to health and learning. They obstruct fields of view and oftentimes provide negative sensory input. They prevent adequate communication due to difficulty hearing what is being said, and also speaking loud enough and clear enough to be heard. I've watched many of you in these meetings over the past months pull your mask down or aside in order to speak clearly enough to be heard, and that is with a microphone in front of you. Masks prevent children from engaging in normal social interactions that are full of nonverbal communication and facial expressions, completely blocking the exchange of emotions, and decreasing their ability to adjust socially to their peers. Additionally, the constant touching and readjusting of masks negates keeping the germs at bay. Constant touching of a mask with dirty hands that is saturated with exhaled respiration does nothing but spread those germs around, not to mention children breathing all of that back in with each breath. Not wearing a clean mask every day exacerbates this problem. Along with potentially very detrimental physical side effects, there is no positive relationship between forced masking and the social, emotional well-being of children. The mental and emotional toll of this past year and a half is more than most adults, let alone children, can bear. I am not asking you to institute a no-mask policy. I am simply asking you to allow parents and families to decide what is best. Therefore, each family can take into account their personal circumstances and determine the best choice for them and their children. Parents are in the best position to judge what is needed for their children to succeed and have a healthy, positive, social, emotional experience in the academic setting. Thank you.
John Roy, Acquia District. Thank you guys for the job you do. I know it's a tough position to lead in a situation like this, but lead you must. In the Army, when I had to wear a gas mask for a thunderstorm, and as a construction worker for the past thirty years, we were told over and over again, what doesn't, doesn't work for masks. I can't imagine going to war against Saddam Hussein wearing any one of the masks you guys are wearing now. They don't stop anything. They're dust masks. On a construction site, when I have dust masks for my goddess to wear in a situation where there's dust, they wear a dust mask. I get fined by OSHA if I have a more serious mask on the job, and I don't have somebody on the site who's trained in a respirator and how to wear a more proper mask that would stop something like a virus. So along with all the dangers that they're saying that it does to kids, I'm saying the masks aren't helping anybody. So it should be a choice. If somebody feels better wearing a mask, by all means, wear a mask. If somebody says, hey, I don't want my kid to have to wear a mask, they shouldn't have to make, wear it. That's all. Thank you.
Ms. Decatur, can I read the next five names before you start? You can come on up and get comfortable, but I thought I would go ahead and get the, get everybody ready. So next five, Maureen Sigmund, Eric Kennedy, Edward Hendry, and Monica Gary. So if you all could just make your way, thank you. Thank you.
No problem. Hi, everyone. Jamie Decatur, Griffiths Widewater resident. Many people are here today to speak to the topic of masks for the upcoming school year. Regardless of whether they'd like parent choice to be the way forward or a continuation of a mask requirement for all children, it is my firm belief that their input should be considered by the board. Sunday evening, I went to Board Docs to review the agenda and prepare what I wanted to say to the board regarding masks. I was interested to find that the agenda item 5.04 titled Required and Recommended Health Mitigation Strategies for the 2122 School Year was under the category of Staff Reports. The background information for this item states, staff will provide information on the updated mitigation recommendations from the Virginia Department of Health and the mitigation strategies SCPS will use for the beginning of the 2122 school year. To me, that sounds like it's already been decided. I had many questions as to why this would be a staff report rather than an information item for the board that would then lead to action, taken in terms of approval or not. I was then told a few things by Superintendent Kisner. Number one, the board can take action if they choose. Number two, this is how we've addressed the return to school plans since COVID. And number three, not sure it matters where it's placed on the agenda as long as the public and board get a comprehensive overview of the topic. While that exclamation, explanation could make sense, it strikes me as odd for the following reasons. A staff report is in no way, shape, or form a direct invitation for the board to take action, unless there's a special motion to move it, which you guys already know that. Number two, return to school plans up until recently were mandated at federal and state levels. Localities were not given much leeway. That has changed. Number three, I'm not sure either that it matters where it is placed on the agenda as much as it matters how it was placed on the agenda. Placing an item on the school board agenda that is a staff report is not for board information that leads to an action item generally. This gives constituents zero input. We could come up one by one tonight and speak to masks and no masks all day long. However, unless the board intends to amend the agenda to bring this staff report to an actionable item, nothing we say for or against masks in school makes any difference. By approving this agenda, you allow the staff to do your job. I'm wondering how required and recommended mitigation strategies for the upcoming school year is not a board decision, especially considering. year is not a board decision, especially considering, as we are aware, continuing to require masks when as a suggestion and no longer a state mandate, should include parent involvement awareness and consent. In such a case, the board should have involvement in passing a plan that includes constituent input. I bet if someone were to ask for a show of hands, a majority of this room would indicate they anticipated a vote today, one way or another. That said, I would like to strongly encourage the board to take action on allowing parent choice regarding masks. What you've heard and will hear is a lot of parents supporting that choice, many of whom support parent choice, will still choose to send their child with a mask. We support that. What we do not support are a small number of individuals telling us that we must not do what we are comfortable with, but instead be forced to do only what they are comfortable with. There was an online option for that.
All right, next.
Hello, my name is Maureen Sigman. I'm in the Garrisonville District. My husband and I have four children. Three are returning to school. One is still waiting his turn. I'm here to talk about our rising fifth grader. She has been in speech since the day she stepped foot in Stafford County School. She's made incredible progress until last year. Last year, with her IEP, she actually ended the year behind where she started, regardless of receiving in-person and virtual speech. And that is because she can't see people's mouths, and people can't see hers. So, they cannot correct her, and she cannot self-correct, as she has been taught to do for the past five years by Stafford County speech therapists. So, now I have a child that I am going to have to pay out of pocket to repair the damage done. On top of that, I hear that you guys get a lot of emails from people opposing return-to-school, masks, that kind of thing. I read those documents when they come up public. A lot of them I've seen over the past year come from a VEA email server. We do not have a lobbying organization to help us send emails. We send them one at a time, and we show up one at a time. And I just wonder, if you want us to flood your emails, we will flood your emails, but we have to do it grassroots. We don't have an email server to do it. I don't even know that, you know, teachers matter. Teachers in this room matter, but the VEA doesn't represent every employee of this county, and it certainly doesn't represent every teacher. There are teachers that I've met through having my children here who don't want masks either, who are terrified from masks, who have had negative consequences for masks. So, I beg you not to just go based on that. I also want to ask for an opt-out. I want everyone to wear a mask who wants to. I am also going to use my last minute to beg you to make the meeting next week after seven o'clock when the middle school open houses end, so that I do not have to choose between attending my child's last open house in person for middle school and being here advocating for her. I should be able to do both. And I think that, you know, this meeting started at seven. If you could make that one start at seven as well, that would open the door for a lot of us to be in two places at once, as a lot of us parents have to do these days. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Eric Kennedy. I don't envy any of you. I don't think you signed up for this when you were elected. I don't envy what you have to go through. But as my wife mentioned earlier, we have two teenagers in Stafford High. Both have had social anxiety issues. That would be okay if there appeared to be a real threat. But what happens on the ground in Stafford, what the students are seeing, isn't matching what people are being told publicly. And what I mean by that is, for instance, when my kids come home, they go to lunch, they take their masks off at lunch to eat. Both my children were in marching band. They were told to cut holes in their masks so they could play their instruments. Football players line up face-to-face, Stafford High line up face-to-face, breathing on each other, sweating on each other. Wrestlers in Stafford County were wrestling. I can't imagine a more intimate physical activity in school than wrestling, and yet they're not wearing masks. So, when my children come home, they're losing faith in the state, they're losing faith in their schools, they're losing faith in the school board, they're losing faith in the federal government, and they're losing faith in the media, because what they're seeing on the ground is not, does not, is not equal with what they're being told. They see this. They come home, and their friends say the same thing. So, my concern here is not just what everyone else is saying, and I applaud all the parents up here, both sides saying what they're saying. But I just want to make it clear that also the risk here is that our students are losing faith in the system, because they don't see what their adults are telling them, the risks that are there, because they're experiencing them firsthand. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Monica Gary. I'm in the Aquia District. I'm here because this is very concerning to so many people, myself included. I have seven children, and five of them are still in our school system, from first grade all the way to a junior in Brookpoint High School. This is such a difficult thing, and again, I don't envy any of you, like he has stated. Is it right for the school board to be making decisions about health? No, but that's where we are, you know, and so you're taking the best guidance that you have, and your personal experiences, and the things that you've got as far as feedback from the community. And from where I stand, I just have to say that I do support parental choice. I think that legally, that's something that's so important and protected. I have two children that had a biological father who's not my husband, and to remove parental rights is nearly impossible in the courts. And so, I think we always have to consider that. That said, I've also told my children, if it's not mandatory to wear masks, these are times where you might want to do so anyhow when you're walking through crowded halls and things like that. So, I also want to, I really want to focus on the importance of caring for one another. We have our individual rights, but we really have to care for one another through this. I wish we could have navigated this year a little bit better in regards to that. It's very important through this, and this is to the parents as well, especially that, you know, we're going to get through this, but our children will remember the way that we taught them to care for one another, for the community around them, for each other, for ourselves as well, of course. So, this is a difficult decision to make, but on that, I was really hoping we would have a decision. I have to say, as the parent of five children getting ready to go back into schools, and I had to re-enroll them because I did homeschool them, and that was an entire adventure too this last year, we really need a decision. I know you shouldn't be the ones to make it, but you are, and we need it, because we have to be able to prepare and talk to them, have discussions about what's going to happen and how to navigate that. So, please, please, please. And I also support Maureen's suggestion to move it to later. I, too, have a middle schooler, and I need to be at the open house with him, and I'm sure we're not the only ones. So, please, next week, and if you can move it later, that would be amazing. Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Edward Hendry.
Before he starts, can you give him, if Mr. Fisher, James Fisher, is here, feel free to go ahead and stand there. I have one more name. I didn't want to, I'm so sorry. You're going to get to start over with your green light. Thank you.
Okay. May I start?
Yes.
All right. I've emailed you the studies that I'm going to mention. I just want to make a couple of points. The first point is that the mask requirement is based on a premise that there's asymptomatic transfer of COVID-19. A large study was done in Wuhan, China with 10 million people. They were able to identify 300 who were asymptomatic carriers of COVID-19. They tracked and traced them to more than 1,000 other people and found that there was zero transfer of COVID-19. So, if there's no asymptomatic transfer of COVID-19, as was indicated in that study, why are we requiring masks for all these children? And if you factor the number that they came up with, 300 out of 10 million, that's equivalent to one student of the 30,000 we have here in Stafford, and then the concept that we're going to mask everybody when there's no asymptomatic transfer. Another point I want to bring out is the fact that masks are ineffective. A large study done in Denmark involving 6,000 people, okay, where they compared 3,000 with masks and 3,000 without masks, and found there was no statistically significant difference between those who wore masks and those who didn't wear masks as to whether they contracted COVID-19. And there are many other studies like that. Another point I want to make is that masks are not only ineffective, they're dangerous. All right? There was a recent analysis done of masks worn by children in elementary school. They found those masks contained pathogens, bacteria, parasites, fungi. Thirty-three percent of what was found were antibiotic-resistant pathogens, okay? Another point I want to make is that the, wearing those masks, right now, we have 20.9% oxygen level in this room. OSHA says that if it drops below 19.5%, it is dangerous to life. It's life-threatening. When you wear those masks, the oxygen level drops to 17% to 18%, and we're doing that to our children. Dr. Marguerite Greets, who's one of the foremost experts in the world, she's a PhD/MD, okay, here's what she said about having children wear masks. She said, "To deprive a child or an adolescent's brain of oxygen or to restrict it in any way is not only dangerous to the health, it is absolutely criminal," okay? And the problem is that hypoxia and hypercapnia caused by wearing those masks causes brain damage, and that brain damage is irreversible. And in fact, when you're wearing masks now, you might not know, it might not happen right now, 20, 30 years from now, those brain cells do not regenerate, okay? Hypoxia is real. Hypercapnia is real. It's dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is James Fisher, and I'm in Garrisonville District. We've all heard school boards across the country claim that they're just following the science. Well, frankly, in my opinion, that's just an excuse, since the science clearly shows that masks do nothing to stop the spread of the virus. However, let's talk about the science. No less than 15 randomized trials found that masks were not effective in preventing respiratory virus infections of all types, including COVID-19. One of those studies from Stanford University states, and I quote, "The data shows that both medical and non-medical face masks are ineffective in blocking human-human transmission of viral and infectious diseases such as COVID-19." A recent clinical trial conducted by the American Medical Association of the carbon dioxide content in inhaled air with or without face masks in healthy children showed that 68% of those children had problems with wearing their masks. The results showed that the CO2 levels of the child with the lowest carbon dioxide level measured three times greater than the limit that's considered hazardous to your health. The children with the highest levels of carbon dioxide, 25,000 parts per million, that's an over 1,100% increase above the level that's considered dangerous and hazardous to your health, and this was only after wearing the mask for nine minutes. Our children in school wear their mask on an average of 270 minutes per day. And then there's very real mental, social, and even health downsides when requiring masks on our children. That same Stanford study I just mentioned says, "Wearing face masks have been demonstrated to have substantial adverse physiological and psychological effects. These include hypoxia, hypercapnia, shortness of breath, increased acidity and toxicity, activation of fear, stress response, and on and on." So, I can refer you to scientific study after scientific study that say masks are ineffective in stopping the spread of the virus. Can you show me one study that says masks are effective? Bottom line, if the science doesn't support it, then it must be about submission, and by that, I mean power and control. Never forget, you work for the citizens of this county. The decision is not about what you believe. It's not about what you want. It's about what we want. And starting yesterday, there's no mandate from the state to hide behind. Like it or not, it's on you. You have the power to get rid of the mask mandate, and I urge you to do so.
At this time, do we have anyone else who wishes to address the board? If so, I ask for you all to make your way to the end, and just one by one come forward if anyone else wishes to address the board. Okay. Come on forward. Wait a minute. Just wait. Wait till you get up to the front and introduce yourself, please.
My name is Stacy Bertati, and I'm with Garrisonville. This really is not even a mask question. It's more of, what are you going to do if children are on quarantine and we're not allowed to do virtual? These kids are 14 days at home. They're going to lose 14 days in school. What are you going to do at that point? Are you going to let them do virtual? Are you going to change the absentee policy, especially for seniors, they can only, or for high school students, they can only have two days off, two days out sick? What do you do about that? We have to look at all those things as well. These are things that are really concerning to me. You know, that's something else that we have to talk about. These are policies that are already in place. So, I mean, these are uncharted waters. I'm not going to, we've never had to deal with anything like this before, so God bless all of us for having our opinions and sharing them. Everybody's got a valid point. I think all of our opinions are important, but we have to take it all into consideration. So, good luck to you guys.
If you could sign in on that.
Sure.
I think it's to my left, your right. Always bad at that. You can just sign in. I appreciate, if there's somebody else who wants to speak, come on, come on down and... Just introduce yourself, and then at the end, sign in as well.
My name is Elizabeth Chinabong, and I just wanted to read to you from the face mask box from Costco. It says, "These masks do not eliminate the risk of contracting any disease or infection, nor do they reduce the risk of illness or death." It says it right on the box.
I mean, please.
There has to be a reason that you decide to use these, and if it says right on the box that they don't do what you guys want them to do, then there's no reason to be putting them on the face of our kids. It's detrimental. Thank you.
Please, let's limit that. Come on down. If you could just say your name.
I'm Lucy.
Hi, Lucy. Go ahead and get started.
Well, they don't really feel good when you, like, have to talk and you can't really hear anybody, and it also kind of teaches you to be a little communist, because you're doing whatever the government tells you to do. So, then you're just blindly reading what they should tell you, and then it teaches nobody that they should speak up for themselves. And what else? People that also, like, have, like, that can't really speak that well, it makes them more upset about it, because nobody can even understand them, so where they just keep it to themselves, and then they can't really, like, communicate that well. So, that's it.
Thanks for giving us your experience. Yep, if you just...
No, no, she's under 18.
I think she can sign in. I think...
No address.
No address.
Okay.
It's been taken off for that reason. Anybody else want to speak? Come on up.
Do you want me to introduce myself?
Yep, just your name.
Hi, I'm Nevin Bertati. I suffer from anxiety and sensory issues, and I can understand. I don't like wearing a mask. It took me a long time to find one that didn't bug me. I understand there are kids that cannot physically wear them because it will cause them to panic, and I understand that. But as someone who has family members who struggle with underlying issues, I cannot, with a good heart, go into school and have to worry about not bringing that home and giving it to my dad or my grandmother, who might not make it through that. And as someone who is very open-minded, I can understand where you're coming from. I'm not going to tell you to wear a mask. I'm not going to tell you to not wear a mask. I'm not going to tell you to get vaccinated. I cannot tell you what you can and cannot do. That is not up to me. I am only 16 years old. But what I can say is that... I can say is that, how would you feel if a family member of yours got sick and passed away? I know what it's like to lose family members, and I'm sure probably everyone here does. But if you can prevent that, and you didn't, I can't imagine how much worse that would make you feel. Because you could have prevented it, and there are ways that you can prevent that. And it, it's a choice that you have to wake up and make. And whatever choice you make, that is yours, and I can't tell you that it is wrong or right. But please, please keep in mind that I, there are a lot of kids like me who have family members with underlying issues, and it would really, really suck to lose them when we could have prevented it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, if you can just sign in, thank you. Anyone else? Come on down. If, if you want to speak, go ahead and stand up and stand to the side and make your, make your way down.
I'm over the mask, it's ridiculous, but...
No, no, come on down.
Come on now.
Yep. No, no, I was just saying, if anybody else is thinking about it, go ahead and get up and stand on the side so you can make your way down.
Go ahead, button.
Nope, she'll, she'll get you started.
Hi, so I'm Amanda. I guess it's Aquia District, I'm not sure. Stafford Elementary, my two children go there. Over the mask, I'm sick of the mask. It should be a parent option to begin with. But I have a question that's on my mind. CRT theory, is that going to be taught in the elementary school, or any school district in Stafford County? CRT, Critical Race Theory.
Right, we don't have a dialogue, we, we don't have a dialogue during public comment. This is your opportunity to tell us of what your thoughts are.
Said I can't ask a question?
You can ask the question, but this is not a dialogue with the...
Okay, well, I'm over the mask, I'm sick of the mask. I hope you guys don't do the CRT theory. Okay? I'm just, I, I thought I could ask a question. I guess not. Okay. That's all I have.
And you can always email us and stuff.
I have. No answer. Thank you.
Go ahead and sign in, please. All right, anybody else? Going once. Okay. I don't see anybody moving. Oh, go ahead, come on forward.
I wasn't planning on speaking this evening, but there was a...
Okay, wait, could you come up and then say your name, and then get started?
Thank you. Thank you for your time, first and foremost. And thank you all for the job that you're doing. I know we're all just trying to do the best for the county, or, sorry, for the community, and for our children. Um, my name is Jennifer Hanson, and I'm the mother of four students. Um, and I'm from Garrisonville County. Um, I, there was a few questions that, um, that I had, um, when we had, uh, excuse me, I'm a little nervous. We had our professional come up that, um, works for the school, and she gave us a lot of, um, facts and information about the, uh, the risks. And one of the questions I had when I was sitting here listening to this was, um, she spoke of the, the masks. And if we're in the classroom and everyone is properly masked, then we don't need to do the 14-day quarantine. Um, that rose a very interesting point to me. I'm not really sure what the statistics show as far as the difference between mask-wearing and not mask-wearing. What is the percentage difference in our success of not contracting COVID with or without a mask? How does that warrant not having a, a quarantine period because we, at a boy, wore our masks? So, um, that's just a big concern to me. Why is that, why is that a, um, why is that okay, I guess? You know, where, where do we get our facts from that tell us that, that we're safer, um, how, if we wear these masks properly and we don't need a quarantine period? It's just an interesting point. And I didn't hear anybody else ask the question. And so, I was prepared to speak tonight. That's all I have for now. But I just wanted to pose that question, see if anybody else might want that answer as well.
Thank you. And if you'll sign in to your, my left, your right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, ask, asking again. Anybody jumping up? Thinking about it? Let me know. Yes? Okay, come on down. Come on, come on.
Madam Chairman, could we ask anyone else that wants to speak to please line up so you'll know?
I think I've been trying to say that.
But if, but if they line up, then you'll know they want to speak because we do have a lot of items to address. Thank you.
Again, I will reiterate, if anybody else would like to speak, please stand to the side so I can recognize you, and you can quickly come forward. Thank you, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. My name is Thais Coliver. And I just wanted to say, um, I am not originally from the United States. I came from a different country. And I came here because America is about freedom. It's about having choices. And that's what is best about this country. I have two stepchildren, um, that, you know, one has just graduated, one is getting ready to start brickpoint. And the whole mask thing, number one, there's no proof that it works. And, and to me, it's, it's become something that people have just put in their face to feel protected. It doesn't necessarily mean they are protected. And there's no studies behind it. In fact, there are studies that show that it, it really doesn't matter. You know, that's not the right mask to use for this type of disease. So, i- it's just to me, why are we still doing this? It, it's just a game. It's about people's feelings. And I think every parent should have a choice whether to mask their children or not. I think that it's very, um, um, cruel to children. But if that's a parent's choice, then so be it. But the parents that choose not to, they should also be able to have that choice. That's what's America about, choice. Thank you.
Thanks. Can you sign in? Right there, yep. Come on down, sir.
My name is Joshua Bocico. I'm from the Aquia District. Um, I have three kids. I grew up in Stafford County, went to Stafford County schools. I have three kids that attend Stafford County schools. All three of my children have had COVID. I've had COVID. My ex-wife has, has had COVID. You guys work for us. You are elected by us. We send emails constantly. I've sent emails to all of y'all multiple times with absolutely no response. That is absolutely ridiculous. You are letting the kids this year, and the parents of those kids this year, choose if they are a boy, they can go into a woman's restroom, and vice versa. But you're not allowing the parents to choose if they want to wear a ma, their kids to wear a mask or not. My kids will not wear a mask to school. So I'm wondering, what are you going to do when my child shows up every day without a mask? Are you going to reject them from going into the school? That's all I have to say.
My name is Sharon Lakeen. Wasn't going to talk because I do this. It's super emotional. But as I sit here, I felt like I just had to share my story. My eighth grader this past year went into a deep spiral depression because of virtual learning and because of masks when we went back to school. He was my butterfly child. He was my social, my, I want to be with everybody. I want to do everything. And I couldn't get him off the floor. I don't want that again. We have started to come out of this. Sports, being involved with people, being back in school brought him out of depression. It didn't matter what I did at home. Didn't matter how much encouragement and love I gave him at home. That didn't help him. He needed to be with people without a mask. And that's what he wants moving forward. Now, if he chooses going into ninth grade, if he thinks he wants to put that mask on, I'm going to let him make that choice for himself. He's old enough to make that choice. Not only did we suffer the deep depression, we suffered severe germophobia. I can't even touch him. I can't even hug my child unless he's about to go take his shower. Because this community, this world has instilled such great fear in him. No matter how much my husband and I try to encourage him, sometimes it just doesn't matter because the community overtakes and overpowers. And I'm hoping and praying that we have a community this year that moves forward and encourages our children and opens us back up for freedom, for life, for love. And I hope by the end of this new school year that I can hug him again, without him having to go take a shower. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
There's nobody on. Everybody went.
All right. Okay, with that, I'm going to close public comment. And, um, thank you all for coming this evening. We will move on to our next item.
Madam Chairman, before we move on, we had a couple people request we move the time to seven o'clock. I'd like to, um, make that recommendation as well. I mean, the issue before was how early it would be for, um...
What?
You know, for, you know, to accommodate everyone, but I assume later is not going to be a problem.
And then I think you mentioned, uh, Missy, the call, which is...
Well, that, that was, we were talking about six or 6:30. But with the middle school openings, I, I, I think...
I agree.
That we need to do that, so that everyone will be able to participate and not suffer, you know, without, with not making that choice.
The other board member that's late enough.
Well, if she can make it at six or 6:30, then certainly she could make it at seven.
Yep, that's fine.
All right, is that a consensus of the board, seven o'clock?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We could change our calendar for that.
I was actually going to move into that and, um, got it off. So, we're going to talk about, uh, first, our board committee reports. Um, let's see, who would like to go first? Dr. Warner, start us off.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, the Finance and Budget Committee met on, um, July 22nd. Um, we are organized for the upcoming year. I will remain Chair. Ms. Randall will be the Vice Chair. The Board of Supervisors has approved the appropriation of the ESSR funds as discussed by Mr. Fulmer. Uh, we began a preliminary discussion of the School Board FY23 budget...
Dr. Warner, if you could stop for just a second. Please, as you all are leaving, if you can just leave quietly to go out, because we do still have remaining board business, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
A preliminary discussion of the School Board FY23 budget priorities included continued implementation of a multi-year funding strategy to address division needs and growth challenges, to continue to address our PPE with increased input from the county relative to the state funding that allows us to be competitive with surrounding communities in recruitment and retention of teachers and staff, and investing in our, in resources, and to establish an adequate funding mechanism for construction and maintenance of our infrastructure while planning for cyclic replacement to avoid costly emergency investments. Um, these are important, uh, priorities to set for the board so that we will have a, uh, work session that was tentatively scheduled for August 17th. That will be discussed in the budget calendar that is, that is up for information on this agenda. Um, the Fab reviewed our SIP goals, which remain to accommodate student growth, maintain existing facilities, and provide high-quality facilities that meet the needs of our community and allow us to provide the programs and resources to all of our students so they reach their full potential. The Fab considered the SIP priorities for the FY23, which will, these will be reviewed at the 8/17 work session and presented 8/24 for information. We concluded that the CIP priorities, the large capital projects presented last year, remain essential for the FY23 year. Given the county's growth, these priorities may be more critical. The list includes high school six, elementary school 18, renovations at Drew Middle School, and additional ECSE classrooms, middle school nine, and renovation of the North Stafford High School Fine Arts wing. Elementary school 19 and high school seven are also added to the list based on the 10-year enrollment projections, although the need for high school seven is just outside that range. The trigger for requesting new schools is when we reach 90% of design capacity. Currently, we have over 95% at the high school level. We have discussed using program capacity for planning for elementary school construct, construction, since the design capacity target doesn't really reflect how space is utilized in our elementary schools. Um, it was recommended that the, um, Joint Schools Working Committee could discuss these triggers to ensure that they are actually meeting the county's needs. Uh, Mr. Anderson presented a summary of the status of ongoing construction projects and 3R projects which we have approved. And that list has been attached to your handouts by Ms., um, by Missy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Any other, um, committee reports? Board committee? Okay.
Madam Chairman, I'd just like to thank, um, Dr. Warner and the committee for sharing this, um, this report with us. I think it's really important to have that as we start the budget year, and it, and I appreciate you.
It's nice to get a list of how we're doing on things that we've approved.
Yes, thank you very much. Moving on to our board member comments, I'm going to start with the birthday girl, Ms. Healy.
Well, you know I am the oldest person here, and now I'm even older.
Now, I did not say that.
I, I can say that, even, even when Mrs. Kibbe was here. I, I'm not sure. I was pretty close, and she was older than me, but, you know. I'm, I'm, I'm the survivor, I guess, you could, you could say. Um, I'm, I don't really have much to say because it's been a long night, and it's going to get longer. But I, I do appreciate the public coming. And, um, you know, there was a comment about not responding to emails. And I, I want to assure everyone that I do read every email. There just is not enough time in a day, um, to get everything done. And when we have a, um, a, a topic that is, you know, very, um, what do we say, hot topic, um, you know, we get, I mean, Mrs., um, Ms. Young mentioned 101. I didn't, I didn't count them, but that sounds about, about right. But I, I, I do read everything. I do not have the time to respond. Um, you know, people are welcome to call me if they want. Usually, we set times to talk because even, even that is, is hard. But I, I, I appreciate everyone sharing their, their, their feelings and their, the comments. And, and I do, I look forward to this, you know, meeting next week. And I thi, I think it is important that the board make this decision. It is our responsibility. So, um, I, I will certainly keep in mind everything that was said this evening, everything that I've gotten to date, everything that comes in between now and the meeting next week, as well as whoever, um, you know, is able to come and, and speak next week. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Randall?
Um, I just wanted to say that I was very grateful for the opportunity to drive a bus. Um, that was, because I said before that I always wanted to be a truck driver, and my parents told me no. But, um, the accommodations that my, um, trainer did for my, to, for me to drive the bus, how high we could get the seat up and move things, and I, my feet didn't touch the ground, but I could reach the pedals. So, I got to drive around. And what was astonishing to me is there is a panel of switches that I couldn't even tell you, and it didn't want to touch. But when you drive a bus, one of the things that was surprising to me was there's a three-foot clearance at the back of the bus. And you have to be, like, when you go to pull out, from, when they pull out from the curb, I have a whole nother appreciation. When I pull out from a curb, I turn my wheel and I pull out. And I drive big cars. But when you take a bus, I would take out a whole line of people if I tried to do that with a bus. Then imagine, I mean, you've got mirrors after mirrors, trying to find your line of where you're supposed to be on the road, staying in your lanes, but thankfully, the mirrors help you do that, too. And kids are talking, parents are talk, it's a lot that they do. I was so appreciative of having the opportunity. And then they wanted me to parallel park the bus. But we can just say that they helped me cheat because they moved everything out of the way so that I could parallel park the bus, as they called it. But I had an amazing trainer who also graduated from North Stafford just before I did, and who, um, has lived in the county as long as I had as well. So that was really fun. Um, the biggest thing that I wanted to touch on tonight, um, we talk, physical health has been discussed at great length, great and thoughtful length. But this board and our... But this board and our budget has shown the mental health is a priority. We have added counselors and social workers. We have protect, we have protected the morning meeting in the elementary school by changing the elementary school time. And I know we have an app that, a program that middle school and high school can use when they check in in the mornings as well. But as we look to the start of school, I still worry and I feel for the social, emotional welfare and the steps we are taking to get in front of this and not just respond. To be honest, I believe we all have had some level of trauma to go through over the last 16 months, each to each our own. We saw facts and figures that showed domestic violence went up while reported abuse of children went down. This further demonstrates another level of heroism by the hearts and eyes of our school educators. Staff are soon going to see these students, and these students will share and show in some fashion, at some level, of which that they are not okay. Additionally, we know that addictions to devices, vaping, drugs, and other unsafe practices have also gone up. Over 50% of our high school and middle school students have had many social challenges, whether they're reliant on or believing what they see or hear, or even unkind things on social media, the things that they put in their head, with no way to handle face-to-face any of these challenges. Talking through subjects when they have had the ease of deleting, blocking, and canceling conversations. I believe our students are able to rise up and see better, do better, and think better. Dr. Kizner once described how hard it is for a child to have had something that happens at home only to come to school and have to keep it inside, and then something makes them blow. And it has nothing to, but now they're a discipline problem in the school, but really, they have a home problem that we just didn't know about. We have a lot of learning to do, but I truly appreciate the need and time for staff to be checked in on as well, given tools and opportunities to help with their own mental health. I believe box breathing, the actual science of tapping, yoga, conversations, journaling, are all methods that we need to give our students and our staff. What I want to do is to be in front of, and I'm glad we have resources that our county has approved to aid our families, and that includes our staff. But what about beforehand? When an issue comes up, should not, shouldn't we have protocols to get in front of this and not just be responsive? I know Dr. Hummer, our award-winning Dr. Hummer, has many thoughts and ideas on being proactive, and I look forward to hearing more about him.
Thank you. Dr. Warner, if you want to start us?
I'm going to keep it short. I just want to, I got the opportunity to go see how Ferry Farm was doing with Ms. Randall. I got to check on the progress of the construction with Mr. Anderson. And Ms. Randall, I was really excited to see how nice the basement is coming together, how beautiful the building is starting to look. And I wish that we could have it open for the start of school, but unfortunately, I don't think that's going to be 100% possible. The new addition is taking shape. I think with labor shortages and supply chain disruptions, I think that's probably a bridge too far. But I'm very excited to see the progress that's been made there. I also had the opportunity to go to Kate Waller Barrett and see their Great Learning Adventure. And I was excited with the number of students that were attending the summer school program at Kate Waller Barrett, and the kids were very excited. They were all engaged and wearing their masks and, you know, excited to be in the classroom, and the teachers were doing a stellar job. I also went to Shirley High Middle School and met with Mr. Underhill, who is the new principal there. Very excited to meet him. He's got a great energy for the school. And I had the opportunity to watch the groups of students, the middle school students, who had put together presentations for their projects for that week and present them to us. One, one group did a very good presentation on reducing the amount of homework. So, I'm just suggesting that they might have some good ideas for the teachers. It certainly does become difficult when you're juggling multiple classes to be taking, to have multiple homework assignments. So, a lot of their points were valid. The other group did a presentation on hunger and has started a food drive in their school. I was very impressed with the students. They did an excellent job. And I want to thank them for inviting me to join them.
Dr. Chase?
Yeah, I had the opportunity to visit Falmouth Elementary School and similarly see the summer adventure program that was going on there. And kids were, teachers and kids were doing wonderful stuff. So, I'm really glad that staff was able to organize that and put that together. And I also want to thank staff for developing a mitigation plan. I don't know what the board will decide, but I know there's a lot of work involved with all of this. So, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Late night. Wanted to thank John and Lionel and their team for the Stafford Report of the facilities project. It's, it's good to see what we have, what's going on. This is very interesting and looks good. Also, wanted to thank the staff for the mitigation plan today. That also is very helpful information. I did not have much activity this week, except last week. I was present at the staff leadership meeting presented by the EDOC, which is the Equity Diversity Opportunity Committee, and the keynote speaker, Ravi Hutshasing. That's how you pronounce it, Dr. Kizner, just in case you had trouble with that. So, that topic, the whole day was interesting. Thank you so much, Roxanne, for putting that together. The other thing, I'm not sure how much I could say about purchasing of land for schools. High School '07, '06. Hopefully, High School '07 is going to be in the north because I feel that the growth is in the north, not only for high school, but also for elementary and middle. That's what the data shows, and I think we need to take that into consideration. Also, we need to look at the land that we already have for the elementary school. And so, today, it's a no for me, simply because I know that the need is in the north. But we need a new high school. So, wherever it is, I will support that in the future. What else do I have? I think that's it. And in terms of, in terms of our health, mental health, something that I've been fixated on even before COVID came. And so, COVID just made it more of a reality that we need to check not only the mental health of our students, but also of our teachers and our staff. And so, I like Ms. Randall mentioning about, you know, driving that bus and being someone else's shoes. And so, that's how it feels sometimes when you are looking at others and not knowing what they're living and how they're living and, you know, the way how you live versus the way how they were living. So, stepping in someone's shoes or even thinking about how somebody else lives is important, especially when we're making decisions about other people's lives. So, it's good to do that in general, and that goes for everybody. So, in terms of the students and this new year and COVID, I'm hoping that, you know, we take all the precautions to keep all our students healthy and our teachers healthy. And even losing one child or one teacher is not, is not okay. So, we could go on and on, and we're always going to have pros and cons and who believes and who doesn't. But I'm about safety, and that's what I'm going with. And I want to stress that we have COVID monies. We need to look into Plexiglas for the classroom for whatever decision we make. We, if we can't deal with the ventilation that I've been talking about for the past year, you know, we don't, it's not at the level that we want it to be, then we need to invest in Plexiglas, at least in the classrooms that are going to be tight with too many students. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Well, I know the people, most of the people sitting in this room right now know that school is up and running in many different ways. We welcomed new teachers and new staff today. It was a great event. It was amazing to see the, I think, and I'm sure I can get corrected, around 360 new staff members. Am I close? Okay, hey, I did listen. But what was actually really exciting for me today is I saw two children, not anymore, that I have watched grow up, who are going into the classroom. One, I know their mother very well through her involvement in the Girl Smarts Program. And it was amazing to see her son there today. I also, another friend who I have watched him grow up, and now he's like at least a foot and a half taller than me, standing there representing the really great things that come out of Stafford County Public Schools. As my board members know, I will not be here, but, and I have mentioned this to Mr. Burnett, I really hope we will consider potentially a 500, some number bonus for those who have gone through Stafford County Public Schools and choose to come back and teach in the community they grew up in. I think they are our best ambassadors. So, to my fellow FAB board members, something to think about because I do think the more that we can encourage and develop our own homegrown, all the better, because I can tell you, it was just great. And there were some principals and others who have developed them, and they've decided that they didn't grow any older, although the students seem to have somehow gotten 10 years older. So, that was really fun today, seeing those students. So, I hope we can begin to think about a way to do that kind of investment for our up-and-coming students. I did mention today for any of those new teachers, if they were kindergarten teachers, they were developing the class of 2032. So, we are looking there. With regard to the superintendent process, we are really excited to get public comment. To date, we have had almost 450 comments online. There are online, there are forums tomorrow at 5:00, Thursday noon and 5:00. If for some reason that those do not work, there is, it's the StaffordSchools.net, superintendent search, there is a response form for members of the public to fill in. We want to hear your feedback to make sure that we get the best person with the fit for Stafford County Public Schools. On a final note, I know we will hear a little bit about transportation, but living in the district that I live in, but I would actually say probably most of us have these similar cases. I'm on a, a group that talks about things going on in my district. And one of the biggest things that's going on in my district is people who speed. Not just speed, they go down the road and think that somebody going 45, which is about what you should be going, or to 50, and going flying by them. Lots of mishaps, lots of issues. I have spoken with Dr. Jones and Dr. Kizner and Sandra and with the Sheriff's Department of trying to do a real concerted effort of what hap, we are going to have school buses on the road soon. Passing me going 45 or 50, hopefully, nobody's listening, on Poplar Road is a lot different if you're going around a stopped school bus. I get angry, because I just get angry on that stuff. But it isn't something, when there's a stopped school bus. My kids, your kids, we all have roads that we know where the speeders are. So, I hope that as we move forward, I know we're going to be working in conjunction with the office, but I think that's just something we want to really begin to think about. People have not thought about it for a while. And all of a sudden, I can tell you, so, that's just something on my heart because I really, really do not want to see a tragedy occur because going too fast. So, I know that's something we're working on with the Sheriff's Office, but I wanted to make sure that board members knew that and how we can begin to get that out, maybe even through some of our, and I look more like Ms. Neely of, to our elementary principals, too, of just reminding people, what are the rules? And we are working on that, but that just is one, something that's really on my heart this evening. So, with that, I will turn it over, Dr. Jones, for superintendent comments.
Just a couple. I know that Mr. Fulmer's here to talk about enrollment update as well as keep it balling and to talk about transportation. And as they come up, just a couple things I'll mention. You mentioned the school buses last Monday. We did have our mandatory safety training. Law enforcement partners were there, so we had conversations about keeping our school and community safe. Just want you to be aware of that. Thank you for mentioning SLA, and we had a fabulous day today with NTI. Lots of opportunities for staff to collaborate across curriculum areas as well as other areas. So, really, really, really great, and this is just day one. So, I would encourage board members to go to the NTI website and just give us a picture of all the things that are happening. Thank you.
All right, Dr. Kizner asked me to provide a quick update on our enrollment today. I'm going to give you some disclaimers really quick that these numbers are going to change. I'm going to give you very high level, just in elementary, middle, and high. I'm going to give you numbers that include those that have officially enrolled, and those are the ones that are in the queue, which means they've started the process. They haven't finalized it, so maybe we're waiting on a piece of documentation, proof of residency, whatever it may be. So, they've started the process, haven't completed it, but we want to kind of plan for that. Secondly, we always have kids that are enrolled, students that are enrolled, that after 10 days, they still haven't shown up. So, maybe they moved and they never told the school division that they moved. So, really, the September 30 number that we report to the state is usually the number that we go with. But I just wanted to give you some tentative updates so you can kind of see the direction we're moving from out of the COVID year. So, for K through 5 at the elementary level, currently looking at 12,475 students, which is about 89.3% of our program capacity. At middle school, currently have 7,300, which is 89.4% of our capacity. And at high school, currently enroller in the queue is 10,339, which is 97.1% of our capacity. And last disclaimer is, we still have a couple weeks before school starts. So, we're going to have more that are going to enroll. We could have some that drop, some that never complete the queue process, or they do all complete. So, those are just rough numbers right now, and we'll, we'll get you better numbers once the first couple weeks of the school year settles down.
Thank you for mentioning. Just, Dr. Warner?
For the elementary school?
Elementary, elementary and middle were both almost spot on at 89.3, 89.4. So, just below 90%.
Ms. Healy?
We had talked previously about expecting a higher number of kindergartners and first graders. Do we have any information on that, whether those numbers are higher than, you know, they were in prior years?
Yeah, so, I know our kindergarten enrollment, we've been tracking it weekly, and I'm trying to remember, based on what we had projected, we were approaching about close to 95% of what we projected already. So, it's, and when kindergartners enroll, it's pretty much a lock that they're coming. We don't have kindergartners that are going to drop out like we do at the other levels that have, we've carried up from the previous year. So, we don't normally see such a big drop in enrollment after the 10 days for kindergartners. So, we're looking to hit the projection that we had for kindergarten, so pretty much in line with an increase from the prior year.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none. So, are you going to hire Ms. Randall?
Absolutely. I trust her with any of my trainers. Guaranteed to win. Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Jones. Just wanted to share with you some comments about the startup of school as it's related to transportation. First thing is, thank you, Ms. Randall, for attending our Jaffa Fair Open House Event. We had a great day. Just really quickly, we had about 31 people that we interviewed for the evening. Out of that 31, we had 13 actually start class on Monday, with the rest with anticipation of our next class of August 26. So, that for us was a really good win-win for us. So far, we have about 166 active contracted drivers. We're still building our routes, but our magic number that we want to stay close to and under is about 200. And so, that creates the void for the driver vacancy that we're hoping that we will be able to fill through internal and with the new prospective drivers that we have in class now. So, we may start the year a little short, but by October, November, we're hoping that we will have our staff a little bit more staffed. Good deal. So, next thing is just about opening school. What's important for our families to know? What's important for our families to know about getting of the bus assignment and moving forward. So, the first thing is, all of assignments will be available on our Versatran eLink website, August second. So, that date, families can log in, and if everything is successful with their students fully being enrolled within the synergy system, we should be able to provide them a bus assignment. All students must be enrolled in that synergy system. That's been a, a big concern, but I think we are managing that well, that the students must be enrolled in synergy in order to receive a bus assignment. The next thing is our communication. Right now, we have an online tracking system that we're going to put forth a better use. And so, we're asking our fa- our community to utilize this online tracking system. This system allows us to provide a faster, more timely response for bus stop changes, any safety issues that may appear in their neighborhood. We are asking our families to use that. We're going to encourage our families when they call to use this system. It's a great system. I think we want to better utilize it this year than what it's been in the past. It allows us to track. The parents get a notification, they get an email. We even get follow-up, so if there's a delay in acting on those incidents, we get a reminder to do it. So, we want to create a, again, a win-win situation for our families. During the first week of school, as the buses roll, we're asking all our family members to have a little patience. We know with the elementary beginning as the first tier, parents want to be out. They may want to have that special time with their child as they get on the bus. But please know that we still have to get our kids to school on time. So, we're asking for our families to be flexible, but still maintain the expectation, which is to have our kids at the bus stop at least five minutes before the scheduled time for the stop. Any head start kindergarten, elementary school student, all will need a little time before boarding. So, we're just asking for that flexibility, that patience from everyone that we are working. But we do want to honor and respect that kids are starting their first week of school. Last thing is the additional bus assignments. This is the form that is required if there's an, an additional stop other than the home. So, this is daycare, after-school stops. From that standpoint, that must be in our office before we can actually do a bus assignment. So, I realize we have been getting bombarded in my office, but I also know that we get another bunch of these forms during open house. So, as soon as parents know about the alternate stop, we're asking that they get that information to the school, and so the school can share it with us and our, so that for, we can then assign the students this stop that's needed from them. So, from there, that's all we have. We're going to post this on our website. We're going to tweet this out on our social media platform, just so that everyone understands what our expectations are and what we're going to look like during that first couple of weeks of school. Any questions?
Any questions?
Just thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
My pleasure, my pleasure.
And, and like I said, you'll probably be contacted about the bus driver and the safety. As you know, that people are driving like crazy out there, and I just think that is something that we want to get ahead of. You need to get them all assigned, but, and we want to work though, I know, with the Sheriff's Department, and they were very open, so I figured I wasn't stepping on your toes, making that little pitch. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I also wanted to say that the trainers that you had there, not just mine, but the other ones that you had, they were drivers that I've known for years in, in the county, drove my kids, or I've just seen them, what have you. They were very complimentary about you and the job that you're doing, but also just hearing them talk about the satisfaction they have with their job was also heartwarming to hear. But to even hear them say, I hope we have Dare Day, because for my kids, and to hear that, you know, that level of compassion that those drivers have for the kids, and, and they're calling them their kids, you know, just like a teacher does. I did, and, but to hear that, you know, I, I can't wait to do. Dare Day was the one thing that they all mentioned that they wanted to have back, because they like turned the radio on on the outside of their bus for the kids to hear music, and they like to give them, you know, have a cooler of drinks on their bus for their kids. So, it was just really, really nice. They were, they're awesome trainers, good, good spokespeople for the job.
Absolutely. I hear good stories every single day, every single day.
Great. Thank you so much for everything. All right, whoops, I got, sorry, my screen went away. Give me just a second. All right. Dr. Jones, anything else that you want to share?
No.
Okay, thank you. Our next single action item is shown. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the changes. The, the, there was policies for amendment, policies for repeal. There was a new policy for adoption, which I believe that Mr. Burnett has addressed. And then there were some policies with no changes. Motion to approve the four thousand policies as presented and amended.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any follow, yeah, Ms. Healy?
I just have a question, and this is with the proposed revised policy forty-nine oh three. I don't know if this is a typo, or I'm missing something, but it, it, the, the penultimate paragraph, it's, it says, in accordance with the Act, blah, blah, blah. In order to perform their assigned responsibilities effective January first nineteen ninety-five.
That's a-
Is that typo?
It's carried over. Remember, as we recall, when discussed at Governance Committee, the-
This was a combined policy?
Yeah, this is where we were combined, we were taking language from the old forty-four oh one and moving in here, which is more proper home for it. And so, this was just carrying that same language from forty-four oh one, which was adopted by the board effective January one nineteen ninety-five. So, the statement is still accurate, even if it seems antiquated.
But this board is authorizing the implementation of the program effective January first nineteen ninety-five. This board can only do something during our term. I don't, I don't think this board has any authority to do something retroactively particularly. I mean, I wasn't even on the board in nineteen ninety-five.
Only you.
That's really ancient history. That's right. I didn't come on until two thousand. But it just, I just question that, that we're authorizing something effective January one nineteen ninety-five.
I guess my question is, it has been authorized since January one nineteen ninety-five. It will continue to be authorized in perpetuity with this change. I guess I don't-
I wouldn't say anything would be in perpetuity. It's-
I know the law against perpetuities as well.
Life in beam plus twenty-one years, but, but, but I, I just-
That is a very bad law school joke for anyone watching at home.
I'm not comfortable authorizing something when I wasn't even on the board, even if I, if it was during the time I was on the board. I, I just, I-
But this was a policy that was in existence. It's just been combined with this one. So, this, this portion of it is effective January first nineteen ninety-five, but it's from an existing. Did you steal my candy? I mean, I'm running out. It's ten o'clock.
This is the present tense. The board authorizes. So, that means this board is authorizing this effective. It, it's just, since we're specifically revising this, it seems that it should make common sense.
But today's, with the date when they revised it?
Yeah, or we, we can just say the board authorizes the implementation, you know, of, of this.
Just leave out the date.
Yeah, that's right.
Because it's going to be effective as of today.
That's right.
Can we do that?
Yeah, and scratch effective January one nineteen ninety-five.
Yeah, if we just scratched that and then just approve it as of today, and then it's all in the present.
Quick question.
Is everybody okay?
Yeah.
That work?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm okay. I just-
So, we can approve it with just that amendment then?
No problem for me.
Hold on, there's still more questions, but we'll note that as an amendment if, if passed to strike the effective January first nineteen ninety-five language on, in that second page of forty-nine oh three. Okay. All right, Ms. Young, you have a question?
It may not be for Patrick. It's just in general. When I looked at all these policies, they were all employee-related. I just wanted to ask if we're done with the student, we're still, it's still ongoing? I, I just wanted to know we were com- Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
So, I, I, I'll speak with this, and if I'm saying anything wrong, Mrs. Boatright can come up and correct me. We've been going through the, the titles. The one thousands and two thousands are complete. Three thousands and four thousands are mid-progress. We have more four thousands that will come later, and then we'll get into the five thousands, et cetera. Just the four thousands happen to be all employee-related.
Okay, twenty twenty-one, you know, just making sure they come to me. All right, thank you.
Any other comments I have want?
If we could just say the board hereby authorizes, then I think it's clear that we're authorizing it now. Or, or just say, you know, effective immediately would be the same, but I just-
We don't want hereby, or give it a date?
The date was probably there, because that was when it first went in. I don't, I don't know. I wasn't here. Even though I'm so old, I still wasn't here. Then, but if we say we hereby authorize, then I think then it's clear that we are now authorizing it to be. You're the lawyer too, right?
I am a lawyer. Mrs. Boatright is just in the back of the room.
Well, you're the lawyer standing.
You're hiding from me, huh?
So, we got that?
Okay, so, let me just clarify. So, it is going to be the board hereby authorizes, going back to that same paragraph in forty-nine oh three, and is that, but still deleting the date?
Yeah, take out, make it a, take out the comma after responsibilities and delete the rest of the sentence. Yeah, thank you.
Is that?
For indulging.
I just have one other comment with regard to the telework policy. I just would like to, and I apologize that I did not bring them tonight. The county also passed a telework policy as well for county employees. And they had a form or something about sort of the adequacy of their workspace, and they had to sign off, sort of like that. I, like I said, I, I'm not anything to change. But we always do talk about, are we similar? And I know we have different things, but I was just wondering if you wouldn't mind reaching out to their HR, because I think, I thought their form at least laid out some of the things that we have talked about with telework. And anyway, I just wanted to note that, that they had just recently, I think it passed unanimously. And so, there were just some other things, like I said, doesn't change what's here. But I did find those forms and attachments interesting that we may want to consider as part of the implementation of process.
Sure, we did, we did intend to have a form as part of a supervisor employee agreement.
They not have to reinvent the wheel. They may have done it across the street.
I'm happy to reach out to Ms. Wagner and, and see what they can share.
And I think it was at the Jul-, the first meeting in July that it was at least brought up. So, that would be, so, but some consistency is always good. Sure.
With regards to what Ms. Hazard was saying, when you say establish eligibility requirements, would that be that fo- a form, or would that be sort of like the written requirement? Would there be that?
The eligibility requirements would be things that we would delineate within the regulation that we would adopt to implement this policy. And then the form would be more about the agreement between the supervisor and the employee.
That'd be perfect. Yes, Ms. Healy?
Okay, this is a lawyer question. You can ask the audience if you like call for it.
Okay, come, come on down.
Are we doing Socratic seminar? This is great.
Why does it say should rather than shall? Because should is discretionary. I mean, you might as well say may, is saying should. I mean, should is not mandatory. If these are the criteria that we want to be included in the regulations and the guidelines, would we not want to say shall?
That is a policies are at the discretion of the board, Ms. Healy. So, if you would like to make that wording change, I would certainly support it.
Why it was, why it should, is there, is there a intent to have this be discretionary and not include all of these items, or is the intent to include all of these factors?
The intent is that these four bullets are the expressed intent of the board as to what the policy should be.
Well, then, then I would suggest. Dr. Chase has, has been here longer than most, so she knows where I'm, I'm going. I have this, this thing. If, if, if we want to require it, we have to say shall.
Okay.
So, hearing this, I know that the motion has been made if there would be a modification to incorporate the changes as discussed with respect to forty-one fourteen and I believe forty-nine oh three.
So, are we including shall?
Substituting shall for should.
So-
Substituting shall for should.
And for forty-nine oh three, we are striking the date, January first nineteen ninety-five, and at the beginning of the par- paragraph adding, we hereby authorize. And for forty-one one, four one one four, we are saying telemarketing, telework guidelines shall, and those four bullet points. And as, those are the only changes that I think the board has.
Do you know who the seconder was, Ms. Hall? Ms. Randall, do you agree to those changes?
I do.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, moving on to our information items, but I do call, I'm going to group these somewhat. If we look at information items twelve point oh one and twelve point oh two, these are related to our, really our mental health needs, meeting those requirements. The reason they are separated is they are two different companies. I believe that, as you can see, the, there has been a request to immediately authorize this. I didn't know if the first two somewhat ran together, if there is any questions.
I'm just, I'm going to go ahead and throw a motion out there. Move to, move information items twelve point oh one and twelve point oh two to action as requested by staff, and they would become eleven oh two and eleven oh three.
Second. Be true again.
It's been moved and seconded to move those to action. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Our, so with regard to twelve po- excuse me, eleven point oh two.
And eleven point oh three.
The school psychologist, any questions regarding that particular item?
So, are we going to move to-
I'm just curious, we seem to be having a hard time recruiting psychologists. Is that an ongoing issue, and what are, how are we, is there, are there any? How are we addressing that, so that we aren't having to go through agencies in order to do this?
It's our hopes every year, and, and it's been an ongoing issue, and it's a national issue. It's not just a Stafford or Virginia issue. We've worked very, very hard with Patrick and his team. We've worked very, very hard with our psychologist coordinator. We're reaching out to universities very early on. As a matter of fact, we're reaching out to them now for next year. We bring on interns, and we try to grab them as quickly as we can, working with Mr. Fulmer and his team in regards to doing a study on regards to the pay, if we need to take a look at that piece. So, we're, we're doing our efforts. Unfortunately, they're just not coming on board. But again, this is across the, the state, and I've talked to other Region Three directors who are in a lot worse shape than we are. They can't even find them at all, so.
Do we use tuition assistance? Do, do we offer to pay down student loans or offer them any incentives as far as student loans go?
For psychologists?
Yeah, it's the same available.
Yeah.
It's the same available. For all, like, that's for all licensed staff.
So, that may be something Fab might want to look at. Oh, you're doing it already?
We just started.
All, all licensed staff, so it's all licensed, so that does include the psychologists.
No, no, I mean the, you know, looking at how we can attract.
Thank you, yes.
This has been, this has been an issue as long as I can remember.
Yes, ma'am.
We've never been able to fill all our psychologists.
Well, we have Patrick now.
No pressure, Patrick, no pressure.
And then, once you find them, we keep growing, so.
We need more.
I know, I know. So, Mr. Hammer, basically what he's saying, if anything goes wrong, it's you.
It's on me.
All right, well, okay.
Are we moving to approve?
I was going to see.
Yeah, move to approve now eleven oh two and eleven oh three. Award of the contract of maximum and award of the three concerts to Sully and Howard. Yep.
I heard a second. Any further questions? Hearing none. All- Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving to now what will be 12.01, which is regarding a contract to the college board. Again, there is some urgency with regard to this one.
Move to, move item 12.01, formerly 12.03, to action as 1104.
Second.
All right. It's been moved, requested to move this to action. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Now we're going to move to approve the contract to college board.
It's our second. It's been moved and seconded. Any questions about this particular item? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, our next item is regarding some placement fees for teachers. Again, I believe this is of time sensitivity.
Could, could we just get a little information about this program before we talk about moving it?
I agree.
Yep.
Come on up.
They're both exciting. So this year, we entered into an agreement with Participate Learning, which is the DBA for the Center for International Education. It's based out of Chapel Hill, North Carolina. Used to also operate as Virginia International, I forget the name, VIF, I forget the acronym was. So Stafford partnered with the then VIF years ago. It's been quite a bit since we partner with them. But they are a longstanding, long-respected J1 visa authorized sponsor from the State Department. They go and they do recruitment of experienced teachers internationally to come and teach in the United States on J1 visas, which are good for three years, extendable up to five. So they go and do the recruitment, the screening to have a highly qualified pool. Once you have an agreement with them, you have access to their candidate pool, and you pay per hire, this placement fee. And which is on its face quite high. But what we try to do in the memo that I provided, and thank you to Mr. Fulmer and to Mrs. O'Brien and his team for working to make sure we got the numbers right on this, is to demonstrate that this is functionally budget neutral. Because VIF, now Participate Learning teachers, are expressly excluded from VRS. And so employer contributions to VRS are not encumbered when we hire these individuals. Teachers on J1 visas are expressly excluded from the employer portions of Social Security and Medicaid taxes under IRS guidelines. So that cost is averted. And the thing that makes Participate Learning a good partner in this is that people on J1 visas are required to have very particular forms of health insurance coverage, including global coverage, which can be expensive. It's administratively, I'm going to use a very technical term, annoying to keep tabs on. Participate Learning takes care of the insurance piece themselves. So they assure that they're, they will provide the coverage for the folks that you hire through their partnership. And so we avert those costs as well. So we had an estimate of what the savings is on that, that is admittedly an estimate. But it works out to the fact that the costs we avert are about equal to the cost of the placement fee. We were very excited with the folks that we hired there in three schools. The principals are over the moon with the folks they've been able to source.
All right, I just love this because I remember talking to Tim King, was it Dr. Chase and I? We were, we met, and this is something that, with Lisa also, that we brought up. And so I'm very intrigued about this. And number two, the fact that they speak a different language, including the English itself, it's amazing because they bring that culture, multicultural relevance that we need here in the school system. So I'm totally for this. Thank you for doing this.
So I just want to say, at Falmouth years ago, we had a teacher who came in from New Zealand. And he is now an award-winning principal in Prince William County, but he was really.
How do we get him back?
He was really wonderful, and he lives in Stafford. All right, so I'm in favor, thanks.
All right. This sounds like an excellent program. I think motion to approve.
About motion to move it to?
To action. Oh, motion to move it to action first. I thought we did that. So it will become 11.05 from the new 12.01.
Chase, didn't you make that motion?
No, I think she said, let's ask the questions and then prior to moving it to action.
Yeah, I thought we made the motion already too.
Second.
All right, this is to move this to action.
To 11.05.
Right.
And move to approve 11.05.
Let's first, let's move it there. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries now, Ms. Young.
Motion to approve 11.05.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett.
Our next item is now, is 12.01.
Oh, one again.
And this is about purchasing bulk fuel. I believe we all know that we will need to do that so that we keep our buses rolling. Any questions on this one? All right, hearing none. Next one is about the budget development calendar. I know that's Mr. Fulmer, and I don't know if anyone from Fab has, or if anybody has any comments.
This, this was reviewed by the Fab, and with the addition of the work session on the 17th, there are, you know, the Fab agreed to this, this calendar.
All right. Everything looks good, we'll bring it back.
Does anybody have any questions?
Oh, I could ask questions now, and I couldn't, I couldn't ask questions at the Fab meeting.
You were, you were, you were a listen-only.
No, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, no, I'm good.
Do you have any questions?
No, I'm good.
Then stop whining.
The only, the only suggestion I would have, but we do this every year, so I know several of my colleagues will laugh when we say. Perhaps we could put on our calendar for the joint school board presentation to the Board of Supervisors not being at the 3:00 meeting. Perhaps we might want to make that request in writing early, just a thought. And I'm happy to help facilitate that, but every year, we go through the 3:00 meeting presentation, meaning many of our parents and staff cannot attend. So that's my only, I won't call it an edit, just a placeholder.
Well, the other issue is, is that the Board of Supervisors' calendar is a little different this year too, so.
Maybe we could bring it up at the joint working session if we have one.
This is something, yes, if you ever have one.
If you have one, maybe we could bring it up.
But just, it's more of just to note.
Yes, certainly noted.
Because it always happens, and it's like February.
March seems like an awful long way away right now, though.
It'll be here. All right.
Thank you.
And then an appointment of a delegate and alternate to the Virginia School Board Association Annual Delegate Convention. I will let those attending by next time come up.
I already did it last year, so.
There you go. So I will let you all work the.
I want somebody else to have that opportunity.
In person. My suggestion to the board this evening is that we will go ahead and adjourn since we will be meeting next week. Possibly we might at 6:30 have a meeting on a potential closed session agenda. I think that might be in order, stay tuned.
When this comes back, I'd suggest we go ahead and put on there that we would approve the attendance of the conference by any new members on the board. Because we know we're going to get several new members. And that, rather than have us have to do that later in the year.
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea. All right. If not, we will, we will be meeting next week, the August 4th at 7:00 with a placeholder for board members as a potential 6:30 closed session prior to. All right?
Thank you, Jesus.
All right, everybody, have a good evening, and we are adjourned.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.